Good afternoon and welcome back to the Landmarks Preservation Commission's public hearing of April 22nd, 2025. We are resuming this afternoon with public hearing item number five, and I will turn it over to Director of Preservation Cory Harala to take us through the afternoon agenda.
Thank you. Just wanted to verify that the recording has been on pause. I gotta note that it hasn't been. All right, starting back up with public hearing item number five, LPC 25-08914. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1285, Lot 59, 18 East 50th Street, the Hampton Shops Building Individual Landmark. This is a neo-Gothic perpendicular Gothic-style commercial building designed by Rousen Goldstone and Joseph L. Steinem and built in 1915 to 16. And the application is to construct a rooftop addition and install a marquee.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Cass Stakelberg, Higgins, Quaysbarthen Partners. Nice to see you all in your new digs. Beautiful. Congratulations. I'm here with Alkis Clamantianos from Perkins Eastman, project architect. Alkis and I will make the presentation, and we're joined by our colleague, our client, sorry, and colleague Greg Medicharian from Pan Am Equities. The project that we're presenting to you today at 18 East 50th Street is, it's an individual landmark on the south side of 50th Street, directly across the street from St. Patrick's. A commercial building designated in 2016, terracotta-clad, historically occupied by Hampton Shops. And they used the building as a showroom. They were suppliers of traditional-style furniture, and they occupied the building up until the 1930s. As I mentioned, the building is on the block south, just south of St. Patrick's. On the far left of the slide, you can see an overall view of the building in its current state. And the photo in the middle is just a sense of the experience of the building. Once you move away from across the street, you really only are seeing the top of the building just given the scale of the buildings directly adjacent. It's sandwiched in between much taller buildings now. And you begin to see the tops of the building really as you move up Madison Avenue. It was designed in a perpendicular Gothic style, obviously intended for its complements to St. Patrick's, which is across the street. An aerial view of the site, just to point out a few things. This immediate neighborhood, and so this is the building here, 18 East 50th Street, at the center of the image. A couple of things first to note about the building itself. So you can see this big white volume. The New York Health and Racquet Club occupied the building for many years. There's a very tall squash court on the roof, about 20 feet in height, right behind the parapet. But what's interesting about this immediate context is just the concentration of landmarks in the immediate vicinity. There's the John Pierce House, which is here on 51st Street, the Look Building here, the Lard Mansion, St. Patrick's, of course, 18 East 50th Street, Saks, Rockefeller Center, and even the Galette Building here. So a really dense concentration of landmarks in a part of the city that has changed significantly since the landmark was constructed in 1916. Some views of the site as you move around. So from the left, looking west from Madison Avenue, you can sort of see, you see the building at an oblique angle here in the middle of the block, up Madison where you're really just seeing the tops of the building above St. Patrick's. And then there's another oblique angle from Fifth Avenue, standing near Atlas Court. You can just pick up a piece of it from the west side of the site. The proposal that we're sharing with you today, there are two components. There's a proposal for a canopy at the ground floor and an addition at the roof. The canopy, which you can see in a rendering on the right side, is a metal and glass, very simple design. It is anchored to the returns of the piers and ties into storefront infill that was approved by the commission back in 2019. It's really intended to sort of harmonize with that infill, both in terms of its material and finish, and is set within the openings, allowing those piers, those deep piers, to remain legible. And then the rooftop addition, which is not easy to see, which is part of our appropriateness here, but you can see just up at the top here at a slight angle. The design, as Alkis will take you through, is derived from the Gothic detailing of the building below, and in its material and color palette, really is meant to harmonize with the facade of the landmark below. And as you'll see, the visibility, because of its site conditions and these very tall buildings on either side, its visibility is quite limited. Stepping back to just talk a little bit about the development of the building. The building was completed in 1916 at a time when this block was really dominated by rowhouse-scale buildings. And it was one of the first buildings, commercial buildings, to be developed in this part of the city and became sort of part of a movement toward the redevelopment of this immediate neighborhood with more commercial development. The map on the right illustrates that sort of small-scale, rowhouse-scale, particularly on the eastern half of the block, these little four-story houses, and you can see that in the photograph on the left with the building towering over those buildings. Some additional photos of the building during construction on the left and overall view of the building with its multi-light double-hung windows and its open arcade at the ground floor that was part of the expression of the facade. By the 1990s, even sooner, the context had changed quite significantly. So the building itself, the landmark itself, it sort of brought about a commercial change to the neighborhood, and its immediate context changed on either side, east and west. The photo on the far left illustrates the construction of 444 Madison, which was constructed in 1931, a 42-story office building. And then the photo at the center, which illustrates 444 here, and the Swiss Bank Tower here, which was constructed adjacent to Saks Fifth Avenue in 1990, a 39-story building. So what had been the tallest building on the block is now one of the shortest buildings on the block, and you can see that evolution through the maps on the right side of the slide. In a few photographs from 2011, these are prior to designation. So the ground floor infill was, the ground floor, sorry, was infilled sometime, we believe, at the end of the 20th century. And you can see, obviously, this large canopy off the front of the building, the flagpoles, these black granite infill panels, louvers, and storefront set into that ground floor arcade. At the time of designation, photos here, single-light windows, sorry, one-over-one windows on the upper floors, and then you can see the infill that was present across the ground floor. And over the course of the last 10 years, our client has been restoring the building, returning it back to its historic condition, introducing multi-light double-hung windows on the upper floors, removing that opaque infill at the ground floor and through commission approval, installing this very light metal and glass storefront infill system to allow for transparency into the ground floor and a program of facade restoration, restoring the beautiful terracotta facade above. Detail of the upper floors of these multi-light windows that were installed a few years ago and the restored terracotta facade. And then just a few photographs on the roof. As I mentioned, there is an enclosure for, a large enclosure for a squash court that you can see here. Photographs on the roof, and you can see a key plan here on the lower left, which occupies a large part of the roof. And then just some of the other elements around the roof. This is at the center of the parapet off the back of the building. There's a two-story taxpayer on the 49th Street side of the block, and one can see up over that to that back parapet. And then the proximity of that squash enclosure directly behind the parapet at the street wall. Thank you. Commissioners, thank you for making the time. I'm really excited to present some of the architecture here. I do want to take a step back and continue on the existing conditions that Cass spoke about.
Alkis Clamantianos with Perkins Eastman, I'm sorry. So we have a typical floor plan, the 11th floor plan, which is the highest floor plan of the existing building, and the roof, the main roof at the moment, which has the components, design components that Cass was talking about, two squash courts at roughly about 1,500 square feet, mechanical rooms, vestibules for the stair, and elevator-machine rooms. We are keeping, the idea here is to make the 12th floor, a new 12th floor, out of the existing roof. We remove the squash courts, the mechanical rooms. Those are going to be incorporated into our bulkheads, and we will have, extend the elevator to the east, which is that single elevator. If you guys can see, right there. This elevator will service the new 12th, 13th, and 14th floors of enlargement, plus the main terrace on top of the 14th floor. As was mentioned before, the existing Hampton Shop has been designed in the neo-Gothic style. So it has a tripartite organization, both vertically and horizontally. It has a lot of tracery and a dematerialization as it reaches the top. Those are the three elements that we've looked into to abstract, so that our design becomes both deferential to the existing building, but also referential in a very soft and subtle manner. These are views from the north to various views. Through these elements and the process that I spoke before, the idea of extending the verticality and expressing the verticality, we've minimized all the horizontal joints, and we've introduced that glazing at the very top to allow for that relationship to become softer, for the solidity to become softer. But also, we've included the GFRC, these GFRC panels are glass-reinforced concrete precast stone that is slightly concave to allude a little bit to the tracery that exists in the Hampton Shop building at the moment. Few things to note, this is a two-story addition that extends past the pediment. There is a third story that is completely concealed behind the existing pediment. That's the 12th floor, or what is now the existing roof structure of the Hampton Shop building. These are overall elevations. So we're adding, as I said, three floors, one which is completely concealed behind the pediment. The two things to note here is obviously the 444 Madison Avenue building to the left and the Swiss Bank Tower building to the right, which basically bracket our building. All the, so the 13th floor, which is the first floor visible beyond the pediment, and the 14th floor are both setback floors from the facade. One sits back 17 feet and the other one eight feet beyond that. Currently, you can see, in the current condition, you can see the squash courts and the water towers. Our addition has the two bulkheads, the elevator machine, the elevator overrun and stack that we said that we would extend to service the 12th, the 13th, and the 14th floor, and its elevator-machine room on the left. And then we have a small bulkhead that takes care of the stair on the right-hand side. An enlarged elevation to show you that the, obviously, the texture and the depth of the panelization, also the dematerialization of that solidity into the glass component on the 14th floor. The idea would be, obviously, to increase and enhance and accentuate the verticality. We have a coloration, which we have some, we have a little bit of a show-and-tell, and we have a panel going around for you guys to see. It is slightly concave, and the coloration of it is slightly a warmer tone that is a subtle, creates a subtle contrast between itself and the gray stone, sorry, the precast terracotta of the existing building. We're adding, the current elevation, top of the squash court is 172, 73 feet. We're adding the two floors and the top of our roof structures at 195 or 194 feet above grade. Obviously, the elevator-machine room and the elevator overrun have to go farther in order to serve the roof at 223 feet. This is the south elevation. We've done it as a pure elevation. A lot of this, the most of the structure back here, existing or new, is covered by the adjacent buildings. Most of the bulkhead, the tall bulkhead of our elevator and mechanical overruns is going to be covered by 440 Madison, is proposed to be covered by 440 Madison Avenue. We do have a little bit showing, though, you'll see in our views later. The design and the aesthetic of the building is a continuation of the north facade as well. We saw this as a benefit to design a holistic approach to the enlargement and something that actually, again, complements the existing building even from the south. An enlarged view. Again, there's an exterior, there's an existing exterior egress stair that we have an interior stair for that connects to that exterior stair. Our bulkhead and machine kind of enclosure is at the very top of that tall bulkhead component. And then you see the glazings that, the glazing areas that have vision to the south. Sectionally, as I said to you, the 12th floor, whatever is now occupies the roof, the squash courts and the various mechanical rooms and vestibules will turn into an enclosed floor that is fully concealed behind the pediment. You can see that there. Then 13th and 14th floor are setback floors. They follow the sky exposure plane of the district required. We do have a little bit of a penetration on the bulkhead, which extends beyond, and we've managed to accommodate the compensating recess rule in order to accommodate that slight penetration of the sky exposure plane. An enlarged section. So we've set the floor-to-floor heights here at 15 feet, 13 and 15 feet respectively. The typicals are 13. We've given the 15-foot floor-to-floor. Given that these are setback floors, there are, and they have access to terrace, we have to drop, we have to drop a slab, create insulating and drainage conditions. Also, there are transfers with regards to ductwork and structure. So that would be accommodated in the drop zone of the ceiling to accommodate all of those building systems. Just a typical plan, the 13th floor on the left. As mentioned before, it sets back from the main facade and the existing facade by 17 feet. You can see the elevator is extending up, the service elevator on the right is extending up to become a passenger/service elevator, firelift elevator. We're accommodating, obviously, restrooms and an interior egress stair that would obviously serve for egress purposes. It does have a terrace on the north that it is, the 13th floor is opening up to. On the right is our main roof terrace, right above the 14th floor. There is service, elevator service access to that, and we have some of our mechanical enclosures and screening happening up there as well. This, the 14th floor face also sets back another eight feet from the 13th floor, so an overall setback of 25 feet from the facade. Some of our typical plan details. So we do have the glass-fiber reinforced concrete cast panel. We have three panels, a one-foot panel, two-foot panel, and a four-foot panel. The idea is to contour these and profile them, as I said, to allude a little bit to the tracery of the existing building and create texture and shadow. It is a rain screen, so there's a fully waterproofed, weatherproofed, insulated backup wall. These are some of our typical conditions. On the top left is our typical pier. On the right, just right of that, is a corner transition where we have to interlock several GFRC panels together. At the bottom left is our typical glazing plan condition. Our glazing is low E, there's a low E coating, argon-filled insulated glazing unit. And then at the bottom right is a transitional glass, spandrel glass to panel wherever the tower of the elevator shaft is. So that's what covers the elevator shaft, the cladding of that. We wanted to show you the roof guardrail and parapet details. This covers a few of typical situations as well. So on the left is a glazed parapet. Excuse me. And you'll see that in our effort to minimize horizontal jointing, we've removed horizontal joints at the enclosed glazing condition. We have a backpan that acts as a shadow box curtain without a mullion, which is, we developed, and it meets fire code and fireproofing. Because this is the main terrace, we also have a clear glass guardrail, laminated glass guardrail for safety reasons, but also to be able to view to St. Patrick's. The lower terrace on the 14th floor is a fully GFRC-clad enclosure, again, though, with a clear glass guardrail in order to allow for visibility out from those terraces. So on the left, you'll see our typical inter-story glazing condition. It's the same as you saw before, where we have that backpan shadow box curtain. We call it a curtain because there is no mullion that attaches it to the glass. It just allows us for a tall span of glass and to create that vertical expression that we were, I was talking to you before, mentioning before. We do have a double door on the 13th floor that opens up to that 13th floor terrace. The depth of the system is both the GFRC and the glazing is about eight inches deep. So as we move on, just to talk a little bit about the critical views that you're going to see soon. We've created these vantage points because these are the vantage points where you would see clearly the building with the mockup and with the actual addition. Obviously, because our building gravitates towards Madison Avenue, those are the most, kind of north of that on Madison Avenue are the most telling and the most kind of important views. We have three or four of those. We have three from across the street, directly from us on 50th Street. We have one from Fifth Avenue, which is quite oblique, and then we have one from the south for you to see. Before I get into the actual views themselves, I want, do you want to talk about a little bit of the methodology of our mockup? In discussions and seeing what was up there, we have squash courts, we have mechanical rooms, we have water towers. In early discussions with contractors and scaffolding and the owner, it was evident that we wouldn't be able to build a full-size mockup as it created some unsafe conditions because of its height and how you brace that scaffolding. It would have been a very difficult situation. So we worked with a scaffolding company and the owner to map out the coordinates of the first floor, of that first 13th floor that I mentioned before, which is the first floor that is exposed beyond the pediment. Working with the dimensions and our model, meaning our BIM model, we were able to provide the coordinates, and the scaffolding company and the owner build a scaffold with an orange net that represents that first floor and the height of that first floor and the extent of that first floor. With that in mind, we were able to use that in order to extrapolate those points and correlate the rest of our model on top of that, so that you get a fairly accurate representation of what the model is and what the building would be based on the accuracy of this mockup. We did the same thing for the 12th floor, because the 12th floor doesn't have an obstacle like the pediment in front. We were able to do the same thing for the 12th floor mockup. And again, whatever is happening in the back, our building now can correlate our montage, and our model can correlate to that first floor that we've mocked up pretty accurately. So I'll take you through the views. This is the westerly view, or you're standing across the street from the Hampton Shop building, on the west side of the street, looking towards the top. The visibility, as you'll see, we have, all the way to the left is as is existing. On the right would be what you would see if the mockup was visible. On the very, I'm sorry, in the middle, and the very right would be what you would see with the full extent of the building or our model on top of the existing building. The two images on the top are the enlarged views, so you can see what is exposed. So you'll see at the very top right, very minimal amount of the right, of the westerly bulkhead is exposed beyond the adjacent building, the Swiss Tower Bank. Very, barely minimum, barely discernible. This is looking at the building straight on, again, on 50th Street. The mockup is not visible yet. That first floor is not visible yet. You are seeing a little bit of an exposure of the top bulkhead of the elevator-machine room just penetrating or getting exposed right above the pediment. But again, it's so set back that the discernibility of relationship is not clear, is obscured. View three. Now you are at eastern side of the building on 50th Street. Again, if you look at the top right, the bulkhead of the elevator-machine room is really the only component that is visible, barely visible. But again, the setbacks make it fairly, fairly not legible or at least blending in with the setbacks, the existing setbacks that occur on either side of the building. View four. This is on the corner of 50th and Madison. Here, you start seeing more of the bulkheads. You're seeing, on the right-hand side at the top, you're seeing the glazing that wraps, is the vestibule of the elevator stops on that bulkhead tower. Again, we feel that this is somewhat set back from the building, and it's oblique view. It's hard to discern this in relationship to any of the street frontages. View five. As we move back, obviously, you're beginning to see some of the mockup. If you look at the middle top enlarged, you see some of that orange netting that represents that first floor, the top of that first floor, the 13th floor. Based on that, we were able to set our model and give you a pretty accurate representation of what the addition would be. As we pull back further, we do have the luxury of St. Patrick's being in front of the Hampton Shop building and obscuring it somewhat. Regardless, even without that, we think that the building and the coloration and the subtle difference that ties in the adjacent buildings makes a good subtle contrast to the Hampton Shop building. As we continue to move further back or further north, this is at the corner of 51st and Madison. That vantage point becomes even more restrictive. You're seeing less of the Hampton Shop building. You're seeing some of the addition as well, the enlargement. But again, because of its setback and the fact that it's bracketed between the two taller buildings adjacent to us, we feel has, creates no conflict with the existing building. And then finally, just to look at even, I guess, further on view seven. This is further, sorry, this is, yeah. So this is even further back, mid-block between 51st and 52nd on Madison Avenue. A lot of the Hampton Shop building is clipped, as is the addition. And again, we feel that the smoothing or the softening effects are increasing as we increase with the distance north. Finally, view eight is our Fifth Avenue. Here, you do see quite a bit. If we've circled it for you to see what is the visibility on the upper right image, the enlarged image, you are seeing the glass vestibule of the bulkhead and a little bit of the bulkheads that are happening on either side. Again, it's so set back from, excuse me, it's so set back from the Hampton Shop building that we think that the conflict or contrast is smoothed out and quite softened. Again, the vantage point here, because it's so oblique, it's hard to understand or tell street frontages in relationship to this setback and the addition and enlargement that we're proposing. So this is the south view. As you see, again, a lot of the, a lot of the south elevation and facade is being blocked by the adjacent buildings, whether it's 444 Madison or whether it's the buildings on 49th Street. Our addition, only the two floors are visible, so the 13th and the 14th floor are visible here. And you're seeing the little change of plane there that projects out, still in the same level, floor level of the 13th and the 14th. As you can tell, our bulkhead is completely concealed behind 444 Madison Avenue. This is second part of our presentation. I'll run through this quickly. This is about the addition of the canopy at the center portico of these beautiful neo- of these of these beautiful neo Gothic vaults. As Cass had mentioned, the owner has has gone into great lengths to kind of reinforce and and express these and kind of bring them to their glory so that everybody could really see them and and appreciate them. We do have the three bolted porticos with a storefront, clear glass storefront, almost fully glazed, except for the trans and piece. And then we have two smaller porticos. On the right is the entry for the the existing second to eleventh floor at the moment. On the left, the portico will also be the lobby for the upper floors that we are we are now making an enlarge or proposing an enlargement for. We've been asked to put a canopy and to to study and explore canopy in the center portico in order to shelter people who enter and exit from from the elements. Just a true elevation and section. As as Cass said, we have two piers on either side or we have piers on either side of each of those porticos. The two center ones also enclose steel steel columns that we will use eventually to tie the proposed canopy back to. The depth of the pier is roughly four feet and we have these beautiful light fixtures and all of the great tracery and vaulting that expresses this entry. So our canopy is roughly, the proposed canopy that we are putting forth is roughly ten foot deep at at twelve foot high, which is roughly a typical length and a typical height that that one would set a canopy. We felt that a very soft arc. We worked with staff here to make it even shallower and also reduce the profiling and the metal work that would cover the structure of 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 the canopy is appropriate. We feel that the arch it has a plays a role in an incremental kind of experience to the to the the pointed arch and the vaults that we have above us. It is clad in glass, so as you're going through, you're seeing the ribs and the vaults kind of unfold in front of you. So there is there is no obscurity or 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 challenge in visibility there. We tried looking at a flat, a a flat canopy. It seemed to be a little bit out of place and something that wasn't soft enough in order to to make, you know, to make this these vaults kind of stand out. Oh, I should say one thing. We are we are tying structurally the canopy to the piers on either side of that central portico. There are, as I said, steel columns within them. That means that we would have to remove temporarily some of the terracotta that is there so that we can we can get to the steel columns. We are providing drainage through this as well. Obviously, we would replace the same terracotta and kind. Some of our details, so this is a very tightly clad structure, low profile conditions, but 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 areas that we have to kind of increase in order to get the drainage to work appropriately. The cladding material is aluminum. It'll be painted dark aluminum. We have some chips that we can share in a bit, or I think maybe you've seen them already. The darker one is is the color of the canopy. Moving on, and here is a side by side of what is the existing versus the proposed. And our perspectival views of that same of that same canopy existing and proposed. Just to leave you with a couple of more slides here. One is, we wanted to show you this slide to show the variety of canopies that have been relatively recently approved, ranging from simple blade structure with lighting below it, but no visibility through to the to the instrumentation of the building to the to the the center canopy, which is a of a series of frames, open frames in glass. And then finally, to the University Club, which is a very minimal arched canopy where they've tried to optimize the glazing and minimize the structure. Again, in my in my mind, feeling as if the glazed art allows for the visibility to the the beautiful implementation of those vaults and the arches above. And finally, this is the last, the last slide here to share with you. A series and varieties of of the enlargements that have been that have been relatively recently approved, ranging from simple, all the way to the left, one Broadway, same material, obviously, kind of a ubiquitous grid of openings and punched openings, but with the same materiality as the as the building itself. Three sixty Broadway, all the way to the right, which it takes a contrasting view of doing something very modern and very contemporary on something that is so historical and ornamental. And then finally, sixty pine, which is a very visible addition, but yet appropriate with its pitched roof, which complements the existing building. And I will thank you very much and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
For your time.
And I think we have some questions. Commissioner Chu followed by Commissioner Ginsburg.
Yeah, I have two questions since you're here. The first question is, how could you get the structure on that canopy even more minimal?
So we are in the
I'm sure you looked at this.
Yeah, so we thank we we've looked at it and we're still looking at it to to minimize it even further. I think the structure in and of itself, the the actual structural part, not the cladding part, has gone to the minimum that it can be, especially with the two cantilevers, sorry, the two cantilevers that connect to the to the existing structure. What we can do and what we we have been doing and we've been wrestling with is the cladding, right? So we've created some detail in the cladding so that actually, and some of these renderings may not may not do the hundred percent justice on what we're trying to do, but because of the lips that we're trying to do around the cladding to play up with the shadow and make actually the 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 canopy look even thinner, right? At certain parts of the time and certain parts of the day. So we looked at several other renditions of making this flat, as I had mentioned. We had a much deeper arch at some point and we flattened it up to a point where we made it shallower to the point where we think is is not of truth enough for the rest of the the building, but.
I guess like the examples you show, the university club is more minimal, but it it has supports from tension.
So the that's a good point that you're bringing. We already felt as if we were tying into the structure quite a bit with aside piers. Doing cables would probably not be embraced by everybody. I think it would add another layer of another type style that probably would not go well with the vaulted ceiling, the vaulted porticos. We tried it very early on. It seemed as if it was straddling the neo Gothic and industrial type of language that seemed to be in conflict with one another. And especially with the details that we have around the ribbing of the of the vaulted arches.
Okay, the other question is, can you talk a little bit about on the image on the left with the rendered for the the addition at the top? What was your attitude in terms of the height relationships of the two taller buildings adjacent to you? One side obviously has an elevator overrun, requires much more height. The other side has an existing building with a flat area and a little shelf. I'm just wondering if you had a thought about relating to them or your thought was that this is what it is and its relationship and plan looks like. It slightly eclipses the proud face of the neighboring buildings just by a few inches. So I'm just, I'm I'm wondering what your design intent is and where your relationship, your design to be forward or backward.
Well, just for the first of all, there were there were the the basics of practicality that brought us forward. We couldn't push the elevator shaft further back. So one of the biggest constraints here, and maybe I should go a little bit further back.
And it's the element that's furthest forward on the facade on that.
It is, it is. And 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 it's one of those site constraints that we scratched our heads quite a bit on and spoke to the owner who's here about changing elevators and putting new elevators, but that was a huge difficulty, huge expense, huge difficulty, a coordination nightmare that I think would have even further effects. Let me get to the plan here. So so here, as you can see, the on the on the roof structure, on the roof plan, the top right elevator is the one that we are continuing up. It's a service elevator at the moment. We're going to make it into a passenger service slash fire fireman's lift. What you're not seeing here is the setbacks the adjacent building has, right? And so this, just by virtue of of where the shaft is, and we're maintaining the shaft because if we didn't maintain the shaft, it would have to become bigger, wider and probably extend further out. So this was a constraint and we we are just wrapping the cladding around. So whatever does project past that terrace or that adjacent terrace to us is still visible as a cladding material or enclosure for that shaft.
How how much setback is it from that corner?
I can get back to you. I think it's, I think that the first setback is, let me see if I can go further back.
The rendering suggests that it's quite minimal, but can.
It is, it is, it is. We're talking about maybe a couple of feet.
Couple of feet.
But a cup, but but that couple of feet, if I were to push it back, I would have major issues with the elevator shaft.
And on the right side?
On the right side, it's very little. We have the, I can use the clicker. We have, okay, there you go. We have this portion that projects past slightly. And that is really just the 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 function of having the symmetry on this floor of having this tower go up and this tower go up. It does project past, but there's also a terrace in the front here on the twelfth floor that this that this kind of element comes and meets. So it is a design, it is a design feature for that for that verticality to be symmetrical with one another, but also to be able to come and meet a small little terrace that's on the twelfth floor.
Thank you.
Did I answer your questions?
Yeah, essentially, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Ginsburg.
So is my understanding correct that you need an emergency generator? And if so, where is it?
We are working through the mechanicals right now, but the emergency generator will be at the very top of the bulkhead. So what you're not seeing, maybe I can go back to the plan here. So if I just start here, we have an elevator machine room. So the so the elevator stops on this terrace. You're able to access the terrace with the elevator. Then we have an elevator machine room. We have a very minimal roof on on top of there. We have a very big water tank, one water tank. We have the emergency generator over here and we have on the on this very end, or actually, I I reversed that, I'm sorry. The tower, the water towers are here or the water tank is here. We have compressors for for the for the HVAC units back here and then our emergency generator will be somewhere there.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? All right, let's see. Yes, Commissioner Jefferson.
I have two questions. And in this particular drawing, typically you have thirteen foot floor to floor. And then you went to fifteen feet floor to floor, which means that you have about three and a half feet of mechanical systems in your new floors. Why fifteen, why fifteen foot floor to floor? Why the change?
Yeah, I can answer that. So a couple of things which I I thought I'd answer in the presentation. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. Each of these floors is a setback floor. So there's a couple of constraints. One is that if I had a thirteenth floor, this drop of ceiling in order to create an ADA access to the terrace, I would have to drop about fifteen fifteen inches. So my mechanical underneath this area on a thirteen foot floor to floor would be very, very limited. Two, because they are setbacks and potentially the tenants are going to have transfers of mechanical and structure, I need a deeper floor to floor, sorry, I need a deeper floor to floor, but that's driven by what I'll need as a transitional space at the top of the ceiling. So our thirteen foot thirteen foot floor to floor, which is typical, right? In these terraces and these terrace floors, especially where transfers for mechanical and structural happen, and we have to put insulation and drop the slabs in order to make ADA access feasible, tend to be a foot or two deeper or taller.
Thank you. The second question had to do with the canopy. The nine inch of the canopy, go to your facade. This one.
Okay.
And you see on the left hand side, you have a kind of a lunge. And after this, it's why to get a curve that will fit in with the Gothic nature. The left hand side, you have this curve that's already there that needs to work.
You're talking about this one?
Yes.
Yeah.
And you want to make it shallow and question there is. Except for the off, yeah.
Well.
And then the question is, why not replicate or use the deeper?
We could do a deeper, you know, we believe that the deeper one, actually, let me take a step back before I answer the question directly. This portico, the arch in this portico is very different than the arch of that portico. And in obviously making one kind of related to one of these would probably create a asymmetry that would look off to begin with. Yeah, so it's pure function. Well, it's no, it's it's there's an aesthetic aspect to it as well. Meaning if we have three arches here that are very different and three consistent arches, vaulted arches up top, the idea of making something that is shallower and a little bit more subtle seem to be a more respectful, and I use that loosely in the sense, you know, I put it in quotation marks. It's a more respectful gesture to say, I am, I am emphasizing the center, the center area, and I'm minimizing the shallow, the minimizing the arch depth and really making it point to the to the vaulted arches versus having a relationship with either of those two porticos.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? All right, let's move to public testimony. We may have more questions after that. And I'll note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item. So I'm going to turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you. Anyone joining us via Zoom who would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function, after which I will promote you to panelist. We ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Lucy Levine.
Hi, everybody. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. H D C feels this proposal would be more appropriate if the rooftop addition were further set back in order to reduce its visual impact on this beautiful facade. We believe the proposed marquee requires further study and note that the facade's original entry glass was deeply set within the building's Gothic arches so that the arches themselves provided protection from the rain.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be John Graham.
Good afternoon, Commissioners John Graham for the Victorian Society in New York. We oppose this large and highly visible rooftop addition on an individual landmark whose design emphasizes its neo Gothic rooftop termination. Any addition should be set back farther and should not appear to be part of this building. It should be made to blend into the sides and roofscapes of the surrounding buildings. It should be made to blend into the sides and roofscapes of the surrounding buildings. We also think the proposed marquee is inappropriate. It has no stylistic relationship to the building. It appears to have flown in from elsewhere and stuck itself onto the Gothic arch. Similar marquees shown as precedents are, we feel equally inappropriate to their own buildings, perhaps despite having received commission approval. The entrance to this building was originally deeply recessed. I'll repeat that. The entrance to this building was originally deeply recessed. A better solution for protection from the weather and one that would also help restore the building instead of adding something new to it would be to recreate the historic entrance by deeply recessing the doors. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony. If anyone else is joining us via Zoom and would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I will note for the record that Councilmember Keith Powers recommends approval. And Manhattan Community Board Five recommends approval.
All right, thank you. So I'd like to ask if you'd like to respond to the comments we've heard.
Yes, thank you. And just briefly, first of all, I'll just address the canopy. I think the Commission, over many years, have sort of taken different approaches to the addition of features like canopies. The examples that we provided are probably more consistent in terms of the determinations the Commission's made, maybe in the last 10 years, of sort of setting up this contrasting relationship, sort of drawing on sort of abstractions of the underlying landmark and its architecture, but doing it in a contemporary manner. And I think that's, as Alkis has described, that's really the approach here. Where you have three different geometries at the base of the building, and the two flanking entries are different heights and different arches. And then the three center bays have yet a different geometry. So developing something that is sort of a quiet arch that centers the building and focuses the entry at the middle of the elevation, symmetrical on the facade, to us makes sense. The materiality of it ties into the commission-approved infill for the ground floor. And we think sort of as a whole, sort of works together nicely, even though these have come to you, you know, as applications over the last, let's say, five years, the infill and the canopy. And then just regarding the rooftop, I think it's important, you know, looking at the view on the left and sort of understanding the basic sort of organization of the building and the need to sort of extrapolate and extend that larger elevator to the roof. Understand the way this is, first in terms of visibility, it is, you know, seen really just at the top of the building. It's seen in conjunction with much taller buildings. And its visibility, I think, is actually quite limited. It does not overwhelm the building, we think, at all. And then, of course, the design and the abstraction of the underlying Gothic detailing, the integration of the GFRC, you've seen samples go passed around. The intent really is to reference the materiality and the color palette of the underlying landmark, but similar to the canopy, to do it in a very contemporary manner. So I thought it was worth sort of reiterating those points, and we'd be happy to hear your thoughts.
Thank you. Commissioners, any final questions on this one? All right, not seeing any. I think we can move to our discussion. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Oh, moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And this application has two components. The canopy at the ground floor, which we've heard a lot of discussion about, and the approach to the contemporary style of it and the form of it, trying to sort of center on the facade and not relate to any one particular arch that would throw off the symmetry of the facade. And then the rooftop addition, which involves extending an existing elevator shaft clad in a material that will closely recall, but be different in its expression than the facade below. This is seen between two very tall buildings, always against the backdrop of these other buildings. And it is set back from the front facade. So Commissioner Chu, would you like to begin this one?
Sure. So we'll start with the canopy at the entrance. I think that the concept of floating a new element in the archway and trying to make it transparent so you can see up isn't a bad one. My objection is that it just feels very heavy. And therefore, I don't feel at the moment that it is floating in there. The attachment to the side seemed quite serious. And I would like the applicant to try to find a more minimal expression. The arch itself, I'm not, it's hard to tell. I think that the, I understand the intent on trying to create a more shallow or larger diameter arc there. I think I'm just being distracted by the chunkiness of the members around it and therefore is distracting me from the historic facade, which is the heavy masonry right that you're supposed to enter into. I think that the lighter expression in some of the precedents would be preferred here. In terms of the top of the building and the addition, based on the analysis and the views and the setbacks that have been provided, I actually think that I can approve this. In every view that I've seen, you've got the backdrop of a neighboring building because the empty, or the empty space above is quite narrow. And so I'm always seeing masonry as a backdrop to the addition. I do think it sets back enough that I'm not confused in terms of the historic facade and the setback addition. Personally, I don't, I think that the articulation is nice. I think that it's nice that they took an element from the historic facade and had some liberty with it. I don't feel like I'm confused with the building at its base, the historic building. It does feel pretty minor in the overall scale and the context of what's surrounding it. I do have one comment. We saw finished samples here. The thing that I didn't get to see is the natural sample of the historic facade stone. And I think that relationship is very important. I fear a little that the finish of the new material on top is much brighter than the existing facade, which will make it stand out more. And that is something that I think needs to be looked at with staff on the final selection in that value of brighter or slightly setback and a slight tone darker.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Master.
I'll start with the rooftop addition. I think that the applicant has done a good job in showing that it's not visible from the front, that the visibility will be minimal from oblique angles, and that because of the coloration, you really can't distinguish it because it's set between two taller buildings. So I think that the rooftop addition is appropriate. In terms of the marquee, I think that they did a good job in keeping it very simple. I think that the glass and the metal, they said that they borrowed it from elements of the retail window, which makes a lot of sense. And to me, the quiet arch, I think it works. I think it's, it fits in, but it's not intrusive. So I can find it appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson.
There's a lot of wonderful things about this scheme. And when I look at the rooftop, the materials they use and the way it was composed and the range screen, I think it's really quite well done. And I remember last night looking at this and saying, Jesus, I barely see this thing. What's really going on here? And today, when I'm looking at it, I see the 15-foot high, see the 15-foot floor to floor and the explanation for that, which is rational. And we're thinking, gee, would be much better if they dropped it down. I mean, it would almost be invisible. I mean, I spent like five minutes trying to fight to see that thing up and see it in a photograph. The, this view, the canopy, you know, when you look at it now, the canopy is so heavy. It really sticks out there. And the ground floor of this, the setback, is really beautiful. I mean, I thought, you don't need a canopy, really. But, you know, everybody wants a canopy, but you put one in. But it has to be much, much lighter. I think that fellow commissioners, it has to be very light, in modern, you know, the thin frame because this lobby, this setback, shadows, it's just beautiful.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum.
Thank you. I agree with Stephen's thoughts in terms of the canopy. I guess I'm, one thing I'm curious about is why the canopy is, I mean, they have a natural break at the floor line, that's me, which would place the canopy above the lanterns, which are kind of a nice detail. Whereas by placing it here, it does seem to clear the view of those lanterns. So in the course of adding to it up, I think that bringing alternate placement. You know, I know, I remember when we approved the canopy for the University Club and the other one for the building down the street on Chambers Street, very similar kind of birds-of-a-feather canopies. I find that the problem with the glass canopies is they're always filthy and they always look crappy. And so I would, I would say that, you know, in the desire to make it go away, I would not necessarily emphasize the need for glass per se, which I think in the end will never really look as nice as it wanted to. I think a solid one would be perfectly fine. And I think oddly enough, a solid one might, in and of itself, allow for a thinner structure. If you were to do this out of a plate of metal, for instance, it probably would have its own structure by virtue of its shape, you know, in some measure anyway. So that might kind of kill two birds with one stone. I do think that you should, from my vantage point anyway, it'd be okay to consider rods or cables going back. Ashes and joints. I do think that testimony about the depth of the storefronts is worth noting and to the extent that you can not push the glass back that it is, you know, where it used to be historically, at least to get it back behind the piers instead of engaging with the piers, might improve the, I have no problem at all with the rooftop addition. I think the rooftop addition is elegantly done and it's much larger buildings and not in contact.
Just on the storefront infill, that is existing, previously approved by the Commission. Okay, all right. Commissioner Ginsburg, yeah.
Michael said about that because, you know, that move has been done in the past where you push the storefront behind the masonry of the existing arch. It runs the glass full. If the canopy is attached to that system, it becomes a part of the new piece and doesn't even touch the masonry. And that's beautiful, but sorry.
Yeah, no, it, I think, would have been helpful to see the two together.
Okay.
Yeah. Commissioner Ginsburg.
Okay, so I largely agree with my fellow commissioners. I find it really interesting that when this building was built, it was the tallest building on the block. Now it's clearly not. And that makes the addition much easier. And I like that it's sympathetic without being slavish. It feels good. So I have no issues with the addition. I'm not sure we can, you can make the canopy much thinner. I understand the concern. I don't find it problematic now. There may be ways by breaking it up, the sides and so on to make it seem lighter. There also may be ways, either with structural glass or fiberglass or metal, to make the canopy structure more of a plate. But I could live with it as is. Although I think there may be ways to improve it and they can work in staff to see what they can do. The issue of the dirty glass is a real issue. And basically, you need staff to get up there with a squeegee every week to clean it if you want it to not be looking good. Well, that's the other way. But then you, then you don't see through it the same way. Anyway, but I can approve this.
Okay, Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, interesting discussions. I agree with the Commissioner's comments. I think that the rooftop, let's start with the rooftop. I think in the context, it's funny that, you know, even the prior case this morning where the building was the tallest on the block and now look at it, it's been dwarfed by the two giants on either side. So in that context, I don't think anyone, at least not me, have any issue with the rooftop additions, given the context. The canopy is interesting. I think this one is, you know, there's so many ways to handle it. And really, it's up to the commissioners and the applicant what they want to do with it. The idea of cables and anchors and, you know, that's something else. But it's interesting, down Chambers Street, we approved several of these. And they are similar to this interface. So I won't add more confusion into the discussion and just let's see what else, what to do.
Okay. Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah. I also agree with my fellow commissioners that although it's a two-story rooftop addition, it is minimally visible from limited vantage points. And I can approve that. The canopy, I had the same reaction because I was, my instinct, I had the same reaction instinctively that Eric was talking about transparency. And I thought, hmm, it may not be transparent for very long just because of conditions from trucks and other, you know, pollutants that will, you know, dirty it up very fast and require a lot of maintenance. And I do agree, the idea of a very, a sense of a very light structure. I personally think, yeah, that a very light metal might work out well. So I think that might, you know, merit some work with the staff on just trying to develop a very light, lightly attached canopy. Because, you know, yes, it is, you know, something attached to the building. But I agree with the architect's general, you know, approach that having something more heavy and structural is, is going to cause more of a distraction than something that's clearly added just as you might add a canvas canopy or something. It has the same kind of purpose. So that's where I'm on the canopy. And in general, I think it's, I mean, you can approve everything. But, you know, those are my comments.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Lefebvre.
So I'm going to echo a little bit what my fellow commissioners said. Number one, I think the addition works really well. And I like the way it sets back, the fluting of it, the materiality. I also think, you know, it is a tough office market right now. I don't know what your vacancy rate is. But I think the thing I like about this space especially is that, number one, there is an outdoor component to it. And the extra ceiling heights give you some flexibility in terms of what the use is going to be. So at some point, it could be an amenity space. A lot of buildings are doing this now, especially in lower Manhattan. So I'm guessing it's something you've given some thought to. In terms of the canopy, I have to say I think it needs more work. It almost doesn't do justice to the building. And that's my problem with it. It's like, I'm not feeling like the goal here is to make it disappear. The goal is to make it sort of work well. And in terms of the examples you gave, on the bases of the Woolworth Building and the University Club, you know, they have a lot of presence. And so I, I don't think, I feel like in a way, you shouldn't be intimidated by the presence of the base of this building, which is quite wonderful and substantial. But embrace it and work with it in a way that you do something that, that makes a little more sense. This almost seems like, you know, I have no doubt that you did a lot of exploration. But when I look at it, I feel like, you know, it was just kind of put in there. And it doesn't do all of the thinking and work you've done overall justice.
All right, thank you all. So I think, I think everybody here is comfortable with the rooftop addition. But I think every- Alright, thank you all. So I think, um, I, I think everybody here is comfortable with the rooftop addition, um, but I think everybody also feels that well, most people, I think we have a couple of commissioners who support the canopy as is, but most think that it needs a little bit of more work. So what I would suggest today is that we take an action in part and vote to approve the rooftop addition and take no action on the canopy so the applicants can come back with a revised and restudied proposal for that. So Commissioner Chu, could you make that motion?
Yeah, I guess.
Then we'll just do a, uh, an approval in part and just the findings related to the rooftop addition.
Okay, so in the case of LPC twenty-five oh eight nine one four eighteen East Fiftieth Street Hampton Shops Building Individual Landmark. Um, a neo Gothic perpendicular Gothic style commercial building designed by Rousen Goldstone and Joseph L. Steinem and built in nineteen fifteen to sixteen. The application is to construct a rooftop addition. I recommend approval for the rooftop addition. Um, for the canopy, uh, how, how do we want to put this? That is to go under further redesign.
We'll take no action.
And take no action. Okay. I recommend approval of the rooftop addition. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features. At the given scale amassing of this office tower, the construction of a three-story step-back rooftop addition with a two-story mechanical and elevator bulkhead will not overwhelm the building. That the design of the rooftop addition featuring an irregular step-back design vertically fluted cladding and vertically configured fenestration will harmonize with the perpendicular Gothic style design of the front facade. That the materials of the addition comprised of light beige metal curtain wall, light beige GFRC cladding panels and dark gray metal windows and door symbols will relate well with the materiality of the building's front facade. I also note that applicant is to uh work with staff on the final selection of the finish of the proposed cladding and how that relates to the existing material of the, of the historic facade. That the rooftop addition will only be visible over the front facade from limited vantage points at a distance where only the upper portion of the building can be seen. And where visible over the rear facade, it will be seen through a gap in the street wall and disassociated from any significant architectural features. I think, does that cover all the?
The last one at the end.
Uh, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of this individual landmark.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson. Commissioner Lutfi. Commissioner Master. With nine in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Alright, thank you very much. So just please continue to work with the staff. I think it's a matter of just refining that canopy. Right, we'll see you soon, as soon as you're ready. Alright, and we're going to, uh, Cory's going to read some items into the record now.
Yes, thanks. So before we do move to the next two and last items of the day, I would like to note that I'll be reading uh into the record, items eight through twelve. Uh, I'll go through each one at a time. First is item eight, LPC twenty-five dash zero seven two one six. Uh, that's three hundred Lafayette Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District Extension. Um, and I'll note again that this is being read into the record, not to be presented today, but to be presented next week on April twenty-ninth. Uh, public testimony will be taken at that time, but I'll now ask Stephen Thompson to see if we have anyone here to testify uh on Zoom on this item today.
There are any members of the public joining us via Zoom who would like to offer testimony on those uh items being read into the record for today, please use the raise hand function. Alright, seeing none, I'll return it to you.
Thank you. Uh, now moving to item number nine, LPC twenty-five dash zero seven six two nine. Uh, this is six eighty-seven B Greenwich Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This item is being read into the record. Uh, will not be presented today and will be presented next week, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, public testimony will be taken at that time, but I'll again ask Stephen to see if we have anyone on Zoom uh that wishes to testify today.
If there are any members of the public joining by Zoom who would like to offer testimony on this item, please use the raise hand function. Alright, seeing none, I return it to you.
Thank you. Uh, next item number ten, LPC twenty-five dash zero six three three six eighty-one Barrow Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This item is being read into the record, not presented today, to be presented next week, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, we will take public testimony at that time, but I'll ask Stephen again to see if we have anyone on Zoom uh that wishes to testify today.
Alright, once more, any members of the public wishing to offer testimony on this item being read into the record, please use the raise hand function. Alright, seeing none, I return it to you Cory.
Next, item number eleven, LPC twenty-five dash zero five eight seven oh seven fifty-five Madison Avenue, AKA twenty-seven to thirty-one East Sixty-Fifth Street in the Upper East Side Historic District. This item is being read into the record, not to be presented today, but to be presented next week, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, we will take public testimony at that time, but I'll ask Stephen to see if we have anyone on Zoom that wishes to testify today.
Anyone on Zoom wishing to testify on this, please use the raise hand function. Alright, seeing none.
And last item twelve, LPC twenty-five dash zero seven one nine six fifty-two East Sixty-fourth Street in the Upper East Side Historic District. This item is being read into the record, not to be presented today, but to be presented next week, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. We will take public testimony at that time. I'll ask Stephen to see if we have anyone on Zoom that wishes to testify today.
Thank you. Anyone else joining via Zoom who would like to speak to this item being read into the record, please use the raise hand function. Alright, seeing none.
Alright, and now to the items at hand. Uh, we have two items to read in. Uh, both will be presented uh more or less together today, but I'll read them in separately now. First is uh public hearing item number six, LPC twenty-five dash zero eight nine zero nine. This is an application for an advisory report in the Borough of Manhattan Block eleven eleven Lot One. Central Park, the Central Park Scenic Landmark. This is an English Romantic style public park designed by Frederick Law Olmsted and Calvert-Vox and built in eighteen fifty-seven to fifty-eight. And the application is to modify paths, relocate a loading accessway and uh regrade landscaping. And public hearing item number seven, LPC twenty-five dash zero eight two two six one thousand Fifth Avenue, the Metropolitan Museum of Art Individual and Interior Landmark. Uh, this is an application for a binding report, also in the Borough of Manhattan Block eleven eleven Lot One. And it's a Bozart and Roman Style Museum Building designed by Vox and Mold, R.M. Hunt and McKemidon White and built in eighteen sixty-four through nineteen sixty-five with later additions, built between nineteen seventy-five, nineteen ninety and designed by Roche Stinkeloo. The application is to demolish the Lila Acheson Wallace Wing, uh, Wing T addition and to construct a new addition.
Thank you. And before we get started, I just want to note for any members of the public in the hearing room today, if you wish to testify on this item, we have sign-up sheets on the reception desk in our ante room, so we ask that you fill out a sign-in sheet and leave it on that desk. And we'll collect them before we take testimony. And I would like to now turn to the applicant team and, and ask you to begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Carroll, commissioners, advocacy groups and members of the public. My name is Brett Guyard and I'm the head of Capitol Projects at the Metropolitan Museum of Art. It's nice to be with you all in this new space. Thank you for your time and for this opportunity to share our work on this most exciting project for us, the Tang Wing. The Met's reimagined wing for twentieth and twenty-first century art, which will be located at the southwest corner of our building complex and will replace the existing wing at that location. I'm here today presenting with Max Hollein, the Met's director and CEO, our design team Frida Escobedo Studio and Bayer Blinderbell Architects and Planners and our colleagues from the Central Park Conservancy. As you've heard, there are two applications before LPC. One is for the Tang Wing building and one is for the landscape improvements that will surround it. We presented this project to the five community boards surrounding the park over the past few weeks. We are pleased that all five community boards have issued resolutions in support of the building and the landscape. Our overall project for the schedule, if all goes well, would have a start construction in the summer of twenty twenty-six with construction lasting approximately three years. Once the building construction is complete, the landscape work will begin outside while the art is being installed inside with a target reopening date for everything in twenty thirty. This is a project that has been a long time in the making and directly supports our mission as well as aims to enhance and improve the relationship of the park and the museum at its southwest corner. And now to share with you all the importance of this project to the present and future of the Met, I'm pleased to introduce Director and CEO Max Hollein.
Okay. Hello and thank you for inviting me. My name is Max Hollein, Director and CEO of the Met. And it's my pleasure to present this truly important project to you. It is indeed critical for the future of our institution. And we are grateful for the partnership that we have received uh to the Department of Cultural Affairs and the Parks Department developing this project and also the partnership with Central Park Conservancy for the collaboration on the landscapes surrounding the wing. The Met staff and our whole design team has been hard at work for this project for many years. And so we are pleased to be joined today by our board chair, Candice Beinecke, and our, or representing also all the trustees who have been part of this process and uh, uh, supporting this initiative from the very beginning. I can see to you that I take my role in this project very seriously. Certainly not only as the director of this institution, uh, but honestly also as the son of a Pritzker Prize winning architect and as a curator for contemporary art and architecture. We know that this is an important process and I'm very well aware that it is important also to have a public process evaluating the appropriateness of this design for the current and for future generations of our great building. We appreciate, of course, the time that we have been able to spend with city leaders, with advocacy groups and many others that we spent over the last past year and where we received feedback on the design. That feedback made not only our process better, but it certainly also improved further the project and that's what we are presenting to you as an outcome now. The Met is a living institution that serves New Yorkers and other local communities as well as drives, of course, tourism in this city. We are a museum for the world and of the world and the world comes to us to see that. With over six million visitors, the Met is the most visited museum in the United States. Over two million of those, though, are local visitors, are locals from New York City. The Met is a beloved institution within the city. Over one hundred and eighty thousand K-12 students from New York City and the tri-state area come to tours to us each year. Last year, we were joined by about forty thousand people for our family festivals, for our Lunar New Year uh possessions, for our Teen Stik, the Met uh activities. Communities come to the Met, we engage with them, we are celebrating together with them. Also, the Met has one thousand nine hundred employees, over seven hundred of which are union employees. They want to celebrate also that it's an institution that kind of is based on the care and also of the intelligence of our staff and also the care that communities have for this institution. These communities feel connected to the Met because the Met in a way is and always continues to be also a contemporary institution. Not only about contemporary art, but really connected with our contemporary uh viewpoints, with contemporary ideas and how we want to uh, uh, project them forward. The Met has actually always been also engaged with contemporary artists. Several of the Met's founding trustees were contemporary artists of their time. And we are proud to have right now also an amazing group of contemporary artists as trustees. The Met has always engaged with contemporary architects also of their time, as we've heard uh in the intro, from Box Mould, the architects of the first wing, to Roche Stinkeloo, the architects of our most recent wings. The Met is over a hundred fifty years old. Um, and during that time, also the story of modern contemporary art evolved. It actually also the, the story of modern contemporary art in last hundred fifty years became actually also first and foremost the story of New York, New York City. New York City became the epicenter of contemporary art in the world. And with that, the museum also grew, expanded, continued to develop its, its story. We are now able to tell these stories, we want to tell these stories and such stories in relevant ways while also expressing our reverence and our care for Central Park, the living artwork that we live in uh as a building. So today, the Met provides a platform for the diversity of voices and for connections with different communities and with critical issues of our time. And so I think that that comes from this idea also of, of bringing the past together with the present, of allowing five thousand years of art history to almost like culminate also in a very contemporary way of presenting the art of our time. Many people don't know and you see that on our slides, some glimpses, that our collection of twentieth and twenty-first century art is one of the most, or best, or most, uh, most coveted in the world. Um, just this in New York, we have some other great collections of that kind, but it is an outstanding collection that should and needs to be seen. The other aspect of this is the, the Met is this one big encyclopedic universal museum in the world that always continued to collect until now. That's what differentiates us from the Louvre in Paris, from the British Museum in London, from the Prado in Madrid or the Ermattage in Saint Petersburg. And I think it's also typical in New York. It is typical that our universal museum always connects to the current time. And so we've been collecting and engaging with contemporary art, contemporary artists from the very beginning of our existence. And this collection has not been fully recognized or appreciated for its quality, for its depth, maybe for its importance for us. Uh, because the galleries that we have for them are not uh perfectly suitable for that, are not inviting uh to visitors, but are already hidden uh, and not, not really connected to the overall circulation in our building. So as a universal encyclopedic museum, we have this unique position both in New York and in the world to display the art of our time in dialogue with the art throughout all time. No other institution can do this and no other institution can do it, probably do it so well than here, the Metropolitan Museum in New York City. And we would like to kind of create that, that environment for that. So we have learned, of course, that contemporary artists not only tell different stories, but they work in different medium, they work in different sizes of, of works and objects and our galleries are currently not suited to really absorb that in an effective and powerful way. So we are here uh today because of our existing wing and you see two images of that, uh, of modern and contemporary art is, was not really fully programmed for that purpose in, in regard to its architectural formation. So the proposed Tang Wing that we will see and hear more about, um, provides a reconfigured wing that allows for a variety in scale, height and size of galleries and should accommodate the program of modern contemporary art in a way it's suitable for the Met, for New York City and for the communities that really kind of love this institution. This project should and will greatly improve the experience of, for our visitors both in how they enter the wing and circulate through it, as well as provide greater visitor amenities and, and basically also restrooms of how, how you can use it. So the work combined also with what you will see, the new landscape designed by CPC will enhance and improve the relationship of the museum and the park and the whole experience as such, benefiting both the park grower as well as the museum grower. You will see that the Met has embraced a variety of, of course, architectural styles over the years. You will hear a report of our, of the architectural development ranging from Bozars to the international style. And so we selected Frida Escobedo for our, our new project uh because we felt that her approach to architecture would be both appropriate, would be appropriate to its location within the Met campus uh and as part of this, this scenic landmark that it uh kind of almost like has its, as its surrounding Central Park. It will, her architecture also can reflect the universal nature that the Met's modern contemporary collection has and how it will be displayed. It's really her, her idea of a design that's based on, yes, on elegance, on also sensibility in regard to material and modern in approach that we feel is extremely suitable for that. Accessibility and sustainability are part of all of our work, all the work that we do within the building, but it's especially true also for this particular project. Replacing the failing building envelope and all of its mechanical systems will have a direct impact on our sustainability efforts. The Met is both a landmark in itself and it is located within the work of art and scenic landmark of Central Park. So we believe, we believe that the design that we are proposing is appropriate for both the museum complex as well as for its location in Central Park. So in addition to caring for our collection of art, we also care for the Met's collections of buildings. We have twenty-one different wings at the museum. And uh, you want to add to that collection. And we want to add to that collection really also the most important thinkers and really also the most relevant proponents of their time. So we have engaged an incredibly talented design team for this project and three of whom are here with us today and will present. So for the Met, the selection of Frida Escobedo's studio as the design architect for the project is in continuation with a legacy of selecting innovative and contemporary architects of their time to add to the Met's collection of architecture to add to our campus. Frida's works take cues from the context of history. It blurs distinction between inside and out and kind of creates this kind of more porous connection to its surroundings. It also is deeply rooted in understanding of landscape and program. We felt that her approach to really bring contemporary architecture to the Met's campus while honoring also the principles of the Roche-Dinkeloo master plan is extremely relevant. Richard Southwick, the partner at Bayer Blinder Bell Architects and Planners, represents the executive architect of the project, BBB. And BBB is known for their work on really landmark buildings throughout New York City and globally. And we have worked with BBB successfully over many years. We are also very pleased to have our collaborators here from Central Park Conservancy, who are the landscape architects for the park area surrounding the Tang Wing. Nick Costa, Vice President for Design at CPC, will present their landscape. And with that, I'll invite Richard to the podium to present the history and context for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Max. My name is Richard Southwick, partner at Bayer Blinder Bell. First of all, congratulations on this beautiful new space. Long time coming, but we're thrilled to be here. I'll be talking about the proposed Hang Wing and the existing LAW Wing, which is located in the southwest corner of the Met. When I say LAW, I'll be referring to that, it's the Lila Atkinson Wallace Wing. And the new proposed Hang Wing will be precisely on the footprint of the existing LAW. In fact, we are using the existing foundations and building upon that. There'll be two parts to the presentation. Frida Escobedo and I will talk about the architecture, then Nick Costa will talk about the surrounding landscape. A little bit about the history and evolution of the Met. The Metropolitan Museum of Art is tucked into the site between two original reservoirs to the north and to the west, Fifth Avenue to the east, and on a site that was designated by Frederick La Ohmsted in eighteen seventy-two. The first master plan for the Met was produced by Vox and Mould in eighteen eighty and you see that in the salmon color along Fifth Avenue. Only a portion of this was built, which is now known as the A-Wing, and that was built in eighteen eighty. Over the years, a series of master plans have been generated for the museum. Besides the eighteen eighty Vox and Mould master plan, Richard Morris Hunt did a plan, which is on the upper right corner. And that was in eighteen ninety-five. And then McKimmy and White's master plan of nineteen oh six further expanded and modified that original master plan. What you see in the red outline shows that only a small portion of each of these master plans was ever executed. The Met has a long tradition of hiring prominent architects of their time. And the buildings that were built, or the wings that were built, exhibit the various styles of the time, running from Victorian in the first buildings that went up to Beaux-Arts, the McKimmy and White Fifth Avenue facade, to international tile and late modern from the Kevin Roach, John Dinklou group. The Met considers their buildings part of the collection. And this next chapter for the Tang Wing will be the next style and the next part of that collection that Frida Escobedo will design. Throughout its history, there's been a requirement to meet programmatic needs that require that parts of the existing buildings be replaced. The McKimmy and White Library and the McKimmy and White Auditorium were both replaced by what we now know as the Watson Library and the Grace Rainey Rogers Auditorium. Both of these were to provide much more space for either book collections or seats in the auditorium. Probably the most prominent replacement was the Richard Morris Hunt main stairs at the front in nineteen sixty-eight by Kevin Roach. And this reflected the need of a visitation growth from about a million up to over four million people from the nineteen twenties to the nineteen seventies. When landmarks designated the building in nineteen sixty-seven, landmarks recognized the dynamic diversity of the different styles that reflected the different eras of construction. And this is a quote from the designation report. At the time of designation in nineteen sixty-seven, the overall Met that we know now is partially built out with a very large parking lot to the south, another parking lot to the north, main entrance on Fifth Avenue, and another entrance to the museum in the southwest corner. An important part of the history of the Met was the latest master plan by Kevin Roach, John Dinklou Associates. I'm going to talk a bit about that. About the time of the designation, the Met commissioned Kevin Roach to put together a master plan for a number of reasons. One, to commemorate its centennial, and also to look to a future vision for development of the program and the build form for the Met. Kevin Roach was selected most probably for his very sensitive integration of building and landscape. These are two images of the Oakland Museum of Art that was under construction at the time. Adel Louise Huxtable wrote in her review in The Times that the Oakland Museum is being watched for a potential breakthrough in museum design. So it's a very exciting time for new and exciting museum design. About the same time and close to home, the Ford Foundation was also being completed. Thomas Hoving, the director of the Met, knew both these buildings and brought Kevin Roach in and engaged him for the master plan. Kevin worked very closely with Dan Kylie, the celebrated modernist landscape architect. And again, you can see the very close coordination of the landscape and the build form. A few of the concepts of the Roach Master Plan included this alternating rhythm of limestone blocks and glass volumes as the building continued to work its way around and complete the master plan. The circulation within the building is not very clear. There were not strong axes for orientation, and the master plan looked to improve that. It utilized daylight as both a wayfinding tool and a way to define destinations for the museum. And he really had wanted to enhance the relationship with Central Park. Therefore, the large glass volumes had good views both from the museum out and from the park in. Frida's work that she'll talk about in a few minutes really expands upon these concepts as she worked through the design. So over the next twenty years, much of the Roach footprint, her master plan, was executed, starting with Lehman Wing in nineteen seventy-five, ending with the LAW Wing in the southwest corner, I'm sorry, the Petri Court in nineteen ninety-one, which is tucked just north of the LAW Wing. Notice that the LAW Wing, which was completed in nineteen eighty-seven, was originally planned for an extension of the European Art Collection, not for modern contemporary. This is a superimposition of the four master plans. The solid red line is the Roche-Dinklou, of which the footprint was basically completed in nineteen ninety-one. It is in fact slightly smaller than the three master plans that preceded it. So let's zoom in a little bit closer and focus on the current LAW and how that currently works for the modern and contemporary wing. The building, these are four images of southwest corner. Generally, it's a tall, rather austere limestone building, very few windows, and it's set on a plateau of fairly spare landscaping. It's interesting to compare the American Wing, which is on the right-hand side of this plan, to the LAW on the left-hand side. American Wing on the northwest corner was completed a few years before LAW. Perceptibly, they are identical from the outside. And if you look at the interior, they're programmed very, very differently. American Wing was very deliberately planned in the spirit of the bicentennial of the time, with period rooms, small spaces, very carefully programmed for the collection for the American Wing. When we go to the south end of the west facade, looking at LAW, again, the same external shell, but a very different type of collection. And it was never really programmed for the sizes, the weights, the heights of a contemporary collection. From the outside, you really can't perceive the entire west facade in any given time. These are five different vantage points where you really experience the west facade within the park context very episodically. And this is very unlike the Fifth Avenue facade, which is much more formal and can be seen all at one glance from Fifth Avenue. These are two sections, American Wing on the right-hand side, LAW on the left. The American Wing, as it was very carefully programmed, had a large percentage of the space designated as special and exhibition gallery space. And you can see that in the tan color. Contrary to that, because the program was much less deliberate for the LAW, is really mixed up with a number of different types of uses. There's a much smaller percentage, something in the range of twenty-five percent of the square footage was dedicated to gallery space. There are two floors of parking in this wing, there's mechanical areas, there's a patrons lounge and a boardroom and offices and back-of-house services. So much more, much more haphazardly planned. Kevin Roach recognized that. He knew that this was not very efficiently done. This was from an interview in New York Times where he said "The LAW Wing really never got built properly. I was never very happy with what happened. There wasn't a clear program, and it just got put together in pieces." I want to talk about some of the metrics of the LAW and how that works as a gallery space for modern contemporary art. The square footage is really inadequate. The collection has grown from eight thousand objects to over fourteen thousand objects from nineteen eighty-seven, when the building opened, to twenty twenty-four. The proposed program increases the gallery space by fifty percent. The loading for the existing LAW Wing, again, for, risen for European art, is a hundred pounds per square foot. Museum standard is a minimum of hundred and fifty square feet. So the Met has had to go in and reinforce one or two bays to be able to stage some of the larger pieces. Ceiling heights were inadequate. There's an optimum height of thirteen to seventeen feet, according to curators. Forty-six percent of the gallery space is below that optimal height and all the additional space is above that, so there's nothing within that sweet spot. There are skylights on the west facade that open up to gallery space. They are permanently blocked off with shades to prevent UV from getting, from penetrating into the gallery. And you can see on this some of the larger scale objects that are in the collection that the Met has a lot of difficulty trying to stage. Accessibility is a critical part of the Met's mission to make the entire museum accessible. A large part of LAW is not accessible. There's a mezzanine on the far west side, it's over eight thousand square feet. The only way to access that is to find a staff person, be escorted to a back-of-house elevator, and then back out to the gallery, a route that's more than three hundred feet long. And this is something we absolutely need to rectify in the new design. With the relatively blank facades, it's very difficult to orient yourself of where you are in the park, of the very few windows. This one on the right is in the stair at the mezzanine level. It's got a very, very low degree of integration with Central Park and as being part of the Central Park scenic landmark, it really does not engage very well with the park itself. The exterior shell is starting to exhibit some severe structural issues. The steel support angles that hold up the stone panels have very significantly rusted, they're expanding. Because of that, you see some examples in the lower right photo. There's spalling, there's cracks of the stone, there's water infiltration at the, at the windows and between the joints of the stone. Overall, the thermal performance of the windows, the skylights, and even the exterior shell is inadequate to standards of today. The proposed Hang Wing will be designed to consume forty-five percent less energy with the use of much more efficient mechanical equipment and a better-designed exterior shell. And counter-intuitively, the carbon footprint will be less after about fifteen years, even including the demolition. Remember that we're keeping the foundations for the building. The concrete has the most embodied energy of the, of the construction assemblies in the building, and those will be reused, and we're building upon that concrete foundation. Kevin Roach, talking about the master plan, really understood that you need to include flexibility, change is inevitable, and museums need to continue to grow. And this is a quote of an oral history interview that took place a few years after LAW opened up. So what I'd like to do is preview some of the aspects of Frida's design and really talk about how the new Tang Wing will be appropriate for the Metropolitan Museum of Art. The wing will occupy the same precise footprint of existing. It's going to be no taller than the adjacent Travis Wing, maintains the overall scale of the building. And in deference to the park, it recedes back on the west facade. So it minimizes the sightlines and the tall wall that, at the west end facing the park. And continues the tradition of the Met of and continues the tradition of the Met of defining the corners with a limestone construction. The, the Met, the new wing will accommodate the program of the modern contemporary art much better with increased gallery area heights and variety of spaces for the display of art. Will be fully accessible, use significantly lower energy. As a part of this, of the scenic landmark of Central Park, the new design, unlike the harsher facades that now face the park, will be softer, more nuanced, there'll be more glass, and will integrate much more with the park than what's there now. And what I find most exciting, the new Tang Wing really represents this next chapter of this longstanding tradition that the Met has had of hiring prominent contemporary architects to design buildings as they look towards the future. So it's my pleasure to introduce Frida Escudero to talk about the design.
Thank you, Richard, for the introduction. My name is Frida Escudero, and thanks, everyone, for your time today. It's an honor for me to be here to share the conceptual approach to the Tang Wing. I would like to start with an image of a wooden model we developed early on the competition, illustrating the existing museum campus. The museum is a collection of collections, but also a collection of buildings. The Met is composed by twenty-one individual buildings constructed over a hundred years. When first commissioned by the Met, my team and I moved to the museum for a year to study the building and learn about the program needs for all the departments. We experienced firsthand that the existing campus plan is very much like a medieval town, a collection of narrow streets and open plazas. The Tang Wing footprint is located at a key intersection of several major collections, offering opportunities to create curatorial links across collections that encompass different time periods and geographic regions and potentially reveal unexpected resonances across time and place. Context and place are crucial to the work we do at the office. My hometown, Mexico City, is a modern metropolis with ancient roots, a city characterized by juxtaposed realities and layered histories from different time periods woven together, as we see in the image of Plaza de las Tres Culturas on the left. And in a similar fashion, New York City is a palimpsest of stories and structures, constantly evolving, yet always retaining traces of what came before. I am interested in architecture's ability to capture a specific moment in time while also remaining in a state of continuous transformation. The material expression of every building in history reflects the relationship between locality, technology, and the human hand, as seen in the image of the Acropolis on the right. We experience a similar legering of history at the Met. Two moments in particular exemplify this. The tree court highlights the juxtaposition between the western facade and the postmodern Roche facade, while the unfinished cornice of the Beaux-Arts Fifth Avenue facade signals that the Met is never complete, but always in the process of becoming. Meaning and matter lie at the core of my practice. I find that simple elements, when thoughtfully composed, can convey great complexity. In the precedent of Huacapugana in Peru, shown here on the left, we see how repetitive motifs are constructed from small adobe fragments. Though each practice, though each piece is different, they come together through a simple binary system, shadow and light, depth and relief. These binary iterations evoke, for me, the craft of weaving, especially in the work of remarkable artists such as Jody Archibald, Olga de Amaral, and Annie Albers, shown here on the right. The inherent structure of weaving, formed by the grid of vertical and horizontal threads on the loom, became a point of departure for exploring geometric patterns that express the seamless connection between form and function, structure and inscribed meaning. This logic of the orthogonal structure also recalls the disciplined clarity of the grids found in Kevin Roche's work. These rhythmic patterns of aggregation creates a dynamic interplay of light and shadow. At certain moments, the modules can be configured as a celosia or marrabilla, a traditional screen found in Mexican architecture influenced by Arabic and North African traditions, yet present in many cultures around the world. These porous elements diffuse views into the park and help regulate the interior light. The resulting opaque and porous surface will mediate the building's facade layer history, signaling that the museum embraces a multiplicity of architectural expressions that echo the broader constellation of human culture. In our proposal, approximately ten percent of the facade will remain open, as illustrated in the examples of the screens shown here. The use of limestone will ensure continuity with the existing building, reinforcing both material and contextual resonance. As we can see in this rendering, the combination of the articulated facade and the screen softened the stone facade, mitigating the solid mass of the building. It also illustrates the small percentage of celosia and the articulated limestone facade, the importance of alignment with the existing campus and the recessed stepped massing. As a brief note, the landscape shown here is purely pictorial. The current proposal will be presented by Nicolas later in this presentation. Three concepts of the Roche Dinkaloo Master Plan play an important role in our design. The first relates to materiality. Prior to the master plan, nearly the entire campus was defined by limestone block and stone. In his proposal, Roche introduced unitized glass volumes as visual and experiential counterpoints to the stone masses, strategically placed at the northwest and southwest corners of the museum. As mentioned before, in order to preserve the material continuity of the campus, we will be using limestone, a material present in the McKim Mead and White Building, as well as in the Roche Dinkaloo Edition. Our modules will follow a rhythmic pattern and feature a split-phase finish on the exterior surface. This treatment will create additional depth and articulation across the volume. In this visualization, we see the articulation of the opaque wall on the left side of the image and the open celosia on the right. The stone modules create a rhythmic composition, accentuated by subtle variations in veining and tone, as well as a regular texture of the split-phase finish. The surf, the surface engaged playfully with the shifting shadows cast by the surrounding trees. This produces a visual effect of porosity, both from the inside out and the outside in. As mentioned earlier, eighty percent of the exterior facade is solid, ten percent is clear glass, and ten percent is a celosia-style stone screen with glass behind it. The second concept for the Roche Dinkaloo Master Plan relates to circulation. It aimed to establish continuous visitor loops within each collection. This objective remained unrealized at the threshold of L A W Wing. In the current configuration of the wing, vertical circulation points actually separate rather than connect the adjacent wings. This is primarily because they are located along the perimeter alongside services and retail spaces. Our navigation strategy consolidates circulation and services into two main cores running north-south through the building. This allows galleries to occupy the perimeter, creating opportunities for moments of surprise and juxtaposition, while also establishing threads of continuity between adjacent wings and completing the internal circulation path across the campus. The Tang Wing will bring to life Roche's proposed entrance, realizing the intended circulation loop through the museum. This connection will allow movement along the Roche facade into the new wing, creating opportunities for meaningful dialogue and cross-pollination between collections. The third concept from the Roche Dinkaloo Master Plan is the use of daylight as a wayfinding tool, offering visual connections to Central Park. The dense campus is punctuated by a series of double and triple-height spaces that bring in natural light, creating a cadence of compression and expansion that helps orient visitors along their journey. Building on this design principle, the Tang Wing will offer direct visual connections to the scenic landmark Central Park, serving both as a tool for orientation and a celebration of the wing's privileged relationship with its unique and cherished surroundings. The daylight galleries are closely linked to the vertical circulation course. They serve both as anchors and navigation points, grounding the visitor while guiding their movement through the wing. The tank strengthens its relationship with the landscape by framing selected views of Central Park, bringing the outside in and allowing the museum to breathe with its surroundings. The northwest gallery on the first floor, seen here on the left, acts as a room with a view, while the south stair gallery offers filtered glimpses of the park on the right. The new wing will be constructed on the existing first floors lab and foundation walls, and it will be lower than the existing adjacent Travis elevator bulkhead. In order to maximize gallery height and improve circulation, we adjusted some of the floor plates while maintaining crucial connections to the adjacent wings. Through the relocation of ancillary programs such as administrative and office spaces, art storage, meeting rooms, and parking, the proposal for the new wing prioritizes high-quality gallery spaces. The project results in an increase of approximately two thousand square feet of above-grade square footage, along with twenty-eight percent increase in volume. By relocating support programs outside the wing, gallery area increases by forty-six percent. Gallery footage increases by seventy-five percent, with eighty percent of galleries falling within the ideal range of thirteen to seventeen feet. In dialogue with the curatorial team and through a close reading of the collection, we identified the ideal ceiling heights of thirteen to seventeen feet, one that accommodates both modern works and large-scale contemporary pieces. These generous heights are made possible by the shifting floor plates described earlier, allowing the architecture to support the evolving scale of the art it houses. Additionally, the resulting range of different heights allows for perfectly proportioned galleries that respond to the different formats in the collection. From typical white box galleries that are more intimate and protected from natural light to rooms with a view that look toward the canopies of Central Park on the Manhattan skyline beyond, we aim to create moments of surprise and contemplation, of encounter and reflection. These views opening to the skies and the skyline of Manhattan will be accessible to the public year-round, extending the experience currently offered only seasonally from the cantor rooftop. In a city where such vistas are typically reserved for private residences, this gesture reclaims the panorama as a shared public experience, one made visible and available to all. We can see here a rendered view illustrating the recessed stepped massing and the alignments the design aims to maintain. The fourth-floor terrace functions as an open airspace for temporary exhibitions, linked by an exterior stair to the fifth-floor terrace, an outdoor area for pause and reflection. Together, they offer an important curatorial opportunity to weave narratives between interior and exterior while completing a continuous circulation loop. The massing and articulation of the new Tang Wing align with the adjacent wings, as shown in the south facade elevation. Here, we can also see how the Tang Wing synthesizes two distinct architectural languages, the precise grid of Roche Rockefeller Wing and the more nuanced texture expression of stone in the LaMonte Wing, originally designed by McKim Mead and White. The Tang Wing recedes volumetrically, both in elevation and in plan, as it falls into Central Park. This is also visible in the west elevation. The card corner at the second floor, as well as the location of the exterior terrace stair between the fourth and fifth floors, are thoughtfully considerations for the intent of receding volumetrically. As a result of our collaboration with several stakeholder groups, the stepped massing recedes in space, allowing unimpeded sky views from Central Park and Fifth Avenue. I will now continue with the drawings and details sections of the project, starting with the southwest exonometric illustration of the proposed exterior cladding materials for the new wing, followed by a northwest exonometric. In this exonometric, we can see in more detail the relationship between the opaque articulated wall and the screen, which represents eighty percent of the facade. In contrast, we can see the location of the limestone celosia and the glazed facade areas. On the right, we can see a section that shows the distance between the screen and the glass with a three-foot gap between them to ensure proper maintenance. The facade articulation responds to varying degrees of engagement experienced from the different vantage points, whether seen from a distance at the first and second floors or encountered up close at the fourth and fifth. Using a strategy of forced perspective, the module is incrementally reduced as it moves upward, subtly reinforcing the perception of a mass that recedes at the top of the building. This variation produces a shift in scale perception. Larger urban-scale modules are positioned at the base, engaging the park-level context with smaller modules at the upper levels, where visitors encounter the building at closer range. As mentioned earlier, the outer facade, the outer face of the facade has a split-phase limestone finish, signaled here in red, while the inner surfaces are smoother with a beltzone finish in blue. Two sections showing the articulated stone facade and the celosia over the glazed facade. As mentioned earlier, there is a three-foot cavity between the screen and the glass for maintenance that we can see here in more detail. And on the plan detail, we can see the angled profile designed to allow the visibility from the interior to exterior while limiting daylight ingress into the interior. A detail of the typical elevation and wall section, including the terraces. The interplay of solid and voice softens the volume of the wing and echoes the shifting pattern cast by the surrounding trees, as we can see on the image on the left. At the southwest corner of the upper levels, an exterior stair connects the fourth and fifth floors. A celosia screen wall frames the views of Central Park and the skyline beyond. The openness of the stair and the fenestration on the fifth floor soften the building's top corner, lightening the massing and inviting a moment of pause. Lastly, we are proposing minimal interventions to the Petri Court facade to facilitate essential art movement through oversized doors, improve the functionality of existing doors at the lower level, and provide required egress during construction. All modifications will be replacement in kind and will match the existing conditions as closely as possible. The loading access path is also moved away from the wing, allowing area for improved landscape. I'll now hand it over to Nick Koster, who will present CPC's proposed improvements for the landscape directly surrounding the Tang Wing.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nick Koster, presenting on behalf of Central Park Conservancy for the design of the landscape around the Tang Wing. The Conservancy has three goals for this landscape reconstruction project: to enhance the park user experience through accessibility, refine the landscape quality and character, and improve the park-museum interface. As with all of the Conservancy's work, we like to understand the history of the landscape in the context of the park's original design. This initial, the initial concept for this landscape in Olmsted and Box's Greenswardt Plan, as shown in this plan, did not have provisions for a large public structure in the park. As Richard mentioned, in eighteen seventy-two, Olmsted and Box provided guidelines for the addition of the museum structure in the park specifically within this location, as it was bound by the former reservoir wall, two sunken transverse roads that bisect the park, and the Fifth Avenue street edge, making it, at the time, fairly isolated from the park's otherwise connected landscapes. As elaborated on in the architectural presentation, the museum was expanded and altered many times since its establishment. Additionally, the park landscape around the museum also changed and was modified with additions and design changes like the sighting of the obelisk and changes to planting and park circulation. In the nineteen thirties, the relationship of the museum and the surrounding park landscape was significantly altered with the removal of the rectangular eighteen forty-two receiving reservoir. In its place, the Great Lawn was created, removing a visual, removing a visual and physical barrier connecting the park to the landscape around the Met and changing the relationship of the park to the museum. However, not all the changes after the creation of the Great Lawn were for the better or integration of this landscape into the park. These photographs and a plan from the nineteen fifties highlight the parking lot that was built, replacing the former carriage drop-off at the park-facing museum entrance. The next substantial change to this landscape resulted from the buildout of the Roche Dinkaloo Master Plan, shared earlier in this presentation. This footprint created the extent of the Met in the park that we're familiar with today. While the buildout of the master plan was being completed in the nineteen eighties, the New York City Parks Department prepared a landscape master plan for the landscape around the Met to address park program, planting design, and circulation. A major element of this plan was implemented in the nineteen nineties by the Central Park Conservancy, which was relocating and redesigning the playground, seen in these images, to closer to the park perimeter and creating a lawn in its former location. and creating a lawn in its former location. This brings us to today. The aerial photograph highlights the existing conditions of the site. The landscape character in its current state is not up to the current design standards of other areas that the Conservancy has restored or reconstructed. Next, we'll share some photographs of the existing site conditions. The existing landscape is composed primarily of a berm slope dotted with trees that span between the LAW Wing and Park Path. The existing path and grading create a pinch point at the corner of the southwest of the building. The west elevation features a lawn and evergreen screen that is out of character with other park landscapes. The loading access from the east drive is not well-integrated into the site design of the landscape adjacent to Petrie Court. And a final view from the west of East Drive shows the asphalt access path that cuts through the planted edge, which creates a circulation desire line in the adjacent landscape across the drive. This side-by-side of the same view from the west of East Drive in early spring and summer highlight the impact of planting seasonality, emphasizing the importance of designing a planting strategy for all seasons. In these photographs are examples of the landscape character from other areas of the park that we will be implementing with this proposed design, with the goal of a planting design that creates seasonal interest, understory planting, defined lawns, and increased biodiversity through the plant selections. Now, we'll share a series of diagrams highlighting the existing and proposed landscape design. The proposed design relocates the path slightly to the south at the southwest corner of the building to relieve the pinch point that will create an accessible path between Fifth Avenue and the Great Lawn. The museum access is also relocated to the north, moving it away from the northern facade of the proposed wing. The path relocations allow for regrading of the slope and path work to create a better relationship between how the museum wing interfaces with the park and the landscape design. And as part of the demolition, construction, regrading, and path realignment, we will have 13 design-related tree removals and two tree transplants. The proposed design plans for the planting of between 40 and 50 new trees as part of the landscape reconstruction. All tree removals and replacements will be done in accordance with New York City Parks tree restitution requirements. The park path lights the B-poles. They'll also be slightly adjusted to address the relocation of the path and to main adequate lighting levels along the paths within this landscape. Nine of the proposed trees will be canopy trees that will, upon maturity, reach between 40 and 70 feet in height in approximately 30 to 50 years. The rest of the proposed trees are a mix of evergreen and multi-stem trees that will create a layered planting palette between the museum and the park path. In addition to the planting of a diverse understory will be planted around the building to create a layer of visual interest and habitat that previously didn't exist in this landscape. And now, we have a series of sections that are cut around the building from north to south. All the sections show the planting design at 10 to 15 years maturity. We chose to represent them at this maturity to illustrate in the near term what this landscape will look like. The first section is taken through the Petrie Court, highlighting the relocated access and the planting updates. This next section is taken through the window as shown in the architectural renderings close to the southern edge, highlighting the proposed grading and planting. This next one further down along the western facade is cut through at gray-wacky arch, showing the grading, planting, and bench updates. And this last section, cut on the southern facade close to the corner, showing the relocated path, grading, and planting updates. And finally, in addition to the typical parks planting palette, we'll be using a standard Central Park Materials palette: asphalt paths with sloped curbs, settee benches, pipe rail fences. One new material that we're introducing is a reinforced turf surface for the relocated access path from the east drive instead of asphalt. I'm going to now turn it back to Frida, who will walk through the combined views.
Thank you. So, we will move through a series of views of the current and proposed building from the perspective of a park visitor. These will illustrate the thoughtful consideration made, which respond both to the existing building and the scenic landmark that is Central Park. The majority of these views are taken in winter, when the building is most visible, and the red outline shows the profile of the existing building on the left and the proposed building on the right. And I'm just going to describe where these are coming from. This is from Fifth Avenue. Fifth Avenue as well. Fifth Avenue. Southeast path. South path. South path in the summer. South path again. Tetherhill path. The southwest path. The east drive. East drive. Deopatra's Needle. Deopatra's Needle in the summer. Deopatra's Needle at night. East drive. Northwest path. Northwest path. Southwest path. And with this, I thank you, and we look forward to hearing comments and answering questions.
Thank you very much for your thorough presentation. All right, Commissioners, do we have questions? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg.
So, one, I just want to understand, the parking under the existing building is being removed to give more space to the museum? Am I understanding that correctly?
Commissioner, yes, that's correct. So, the parking garage spans underneath the existing Lila Atchison Walk Wing and the Rockefeller Wing. So, we're losing about just over a third of our parking spots to put the mechanical below, but retaining the rest of the parking.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, yes. Commissioner, too.
Just related to Mark's question, are the existing foundations and piles sufficient for the new load of the new wing?
Yes. I'm like, yes.
Sorry, it's a bit technical.
I'm back. Yes, they are. And we've been doing test pits and test borings with our teams. We will do some reinforcement, but at localized locations, as we reconfigure the course.
Can I ask another?
Yes, please.
About this, what I think is a wonderful textured exterior here, can I ask a question about birds? Because we're in the park.
Yes. Henry, would you like to come up and talk about the birds? Because you've been doing some great work on this. He has a very technical answer.
Sure. Thanks. So, to speak about the birds, I'm Henry Miller from Bioblender Bell, principal. And we did do a lot of research to make sure that we're doing as much as we can to avoid birds perching and nesting in the facade. Part of that started actually on the Rockefeller Wing adjacent. We met with the American Bird Conservancy, made sure that we provided bird-safe glass in that case. So, for this project as well, we reached out to Dr. Shepherd at the American Bird Conservancy, and she's published a white paper on this. The horizontal surfaces are angled at 30 degrees, which is understood to be the ideal angle to stop birds from wanting to land there. And at the fifth floor, where you're up against the smaller spacing of the facade, which, you know, recedes in scale, as Frida mentioned, you're actually able to, you know, get up and clean out the facade if you needed to. So, it's available there for that. And then, all of the celosia screens have that three-foot cavity behind as well. So, if any maintenance was required, you could get to that.
Cleaning windows, etc.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Goldblum.
Two questions. It seems that the master plan for the building, as it's changed over the years, has always taken a symmetrical form relative to the west facade. Even Roche and Dinkaloo's buildings, say what you will about the particular design, took a symmetrical view. What's your view, what's your thinking on that? Obviously, you're doing something that's quite different, but it's also something that's taking an opinion about the development of the museum as an entity vis-à-vis the park. What's your thinking about that?
Michael, that's a very good question. We've thought a lot about that over the last year or so.
I figure you would.
The, for the 150-plus years that the Met has been at this location, there's only been a symmetrical facade for about 35 to 40 years. Landmarks in the early '70s, when you were looking at some of the manifestations of buildings from the Roche plan, at one point had wanted to expose some of the diversity. Because of some precedent, you opted not to, but it's on the record for landmarks that you would have preferred to have more of a diverse look. I think the more fundamental answer is, Fifth Avenue is a very formal facade, a very formal setting. The park is not. It's very organic. If you look at the northwest corner compared to the southwest corner, the topography is very different. The paths are very different. The vegetation is very different. And other than the shell, the program as well from the interior is very different at all parts. You know, so to be more responsive to the design, we've opted to take the route that Frida's looked at.
Got it. And connected with that, the Roche Dinkaloo buildings have, as Frida had said, have a very strong grid. That's pretty much, that's pretty much the one note that they played. Does the new design with its much more graduated approach have any relation to that grid? Is it supposed to? Is it supposed to be different? How are we supposed to think of the connection between the proposed building and the building pieces that remain in terms of that grid?
As Frida had shown on one of her slides, there are fairly clear relationships between vertical datum points on the adjacent Petrie Court and further north to the new building. Yeah, I'm coming up for you. Yeah.
Thanks.
But I will say that from kind of overall scale, from overall materiality, there's a great deal of referential deference, if you will, to the Roche master plan concepts. What didn't work, and Frida also, there's another slide, which the execution of the interior circulation was never very successful. You'll see many, many dead ends, which this new plan clarifies the circulation, which will be a vast improvement for the visitor experience.
No doubt. Thank you.
Perhaps this is the visualization that helps to understand the alignments that we have with the adjacent wing, but also there is a consideration of the different floors labs that we have to negotiate. So, it's a combination, and that's why the weaving concept becomes so relevant, because we're trying to connect all of these different connections and conditions and to bring them together into that corner space.
But do you think that when the building is done and when it's looked at from the outside, do you think that there's going to be a sense of connection to the Roche Dinkaloo volumes that remain that face west and that face south? Or do you think that this new wing will really feel very, very disjunctive of them?
Either way. Yeah, this still maintains that alternating solid limestone corner with the large expansive glass on the Rockefeller Wing and further to the north on the west facade, the Petrie Court.
Okay, thanks.
That question. The experience I've seen from your plans really helped continue a master plan of circulation through the whole complex. However, this wing has a very specific aesthetic and look to it on the outside. I'm assuming from your planning that once you entered this wing, you do sense that you're in a different portion or one of the many structures that make up the entire complex of the museum.
Yeah, that's exactly the point.
It will have its own character inside, outside.
Yeah, that's exactly the point. That's the success of this plan, is people can finally find this remarkable collection. You know, we've had people come up to us and say, "Oh, I never knew that there's a modern contemporary wing in the collection that you had." It's this unknown, kind of hard-to-find corner.
I just wanted to add one point, too, that that's something we really celebrate at the Met and that makes the Met so special is this enfilade of experiences. And so, even though the circulation paths, actually, some of them walk through initially, right? But the way the buildings have been added to over time, you walk through a threshold and you are in a different experience. And that is very much something that we've asked the design team to do. We think is important.
Well, what's interesting is what we're talking about now has a lot to do with the exterior, but the experience and procession through such a large institution like this museum requires some identity for different wings within your interior experience. And I want to make sure, because you also need respite in this because it's so big. You need areas to just take a break, look outside, and then move on. So, I do like that you've inserted that throughout your experience.
I think that is precisely right. By moving the circulation course to the center and creating this path that is continuous, we were able to create these moments of convergence between adjacent wings, which gives a lot of curatorial possibilities, but also that provides a delay in the way that people are circulating through the wing. It's not immediately after you enter the wing. You have a series of galleries that guide you through this sequence of spaces. And you have, right in front of the stairs, these moments where you can connect with the park, which is a very useful tool for wayfinding and also to be invited to come up to the upper levels.
I'm sorry, just very interested. It's a very complex project. But how is the, how flexible are the gallery spaces in this design? For future, I just want to understand what is flexible here?
So, I'll let the architecture team speak about this, but in our brief, as the owner, we wanted to create unique galleries for the Met. And it wasn't about infinite flexibility of constant change, but about flexibility through a variety of galleries, through actual, through specificity of types of space that are appropriate for our collection. And this is something Max and the team have talked at length about even prior to starting the project, is what makes the Met different and special in its display of modern contemporary in relation to its universal collection.
So, each of those spaces has their own character and is appropriate for certain types of work?
Yeah, and I can let Frida speak to that.
And we can go back to that slide. This is the one. So, you can see that some of the spaces become more intimate and they're protected from the light. And as we move towards the perimeter, they can be more connected to the exterior views with framed views of the park and the city, or they can have different heights. The possibility that the shift in this labs provided was to have these huge range of gallery spaces that would become very specific to the type of artwork that it holds.
And you can access the exterior on those terraces from the gallery spaces?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Jefferson.
It's a fantastic scheme. My question has to do with the light. You have a proportion of the stone to glass keep changing. A tight variation of light.
Commissioner Jefferson, can you just repeat the question into the microphone? I think that our participants on Zoom probably couldn't hear you.
Your facade has to do with variations of thickness of material and proportions. And the question is, you have that variety of light. How much, how much variety? How much different quality of light does your scheme propose? Two, five, 10, 20?
Yes, so we have located openings throughout the wing. Some of them are true openings, like the one that you see on the left of the image, that is facing west, but is also protected by the landscape, and it's on the first floor. And then, the two openings that have a celosia moment are on the south, which is the image that you see here on the right. And that is in alignment with one of the circulation course. We're calling them the stereo galleries for now. And that is creating a different typology. As you move up the space, the light quality changes. And the pieces are reacting also to the amount of light that we're receiving when we're up above. So, as the pieces decrease, they're actually reacting to light. It's very much like a tree. It's acting in the same way. And the other one is located on the north, which has a more even light.
Right, and Commissioner Goldblum, followed by Commissioner Latfee.
The split-faced stone. That's, I'm putting you finish for the museum. How do you see that? How do you see that in terms of weathering? Is it your intention that it get a patina over time? Or is it your intention that that's going to be something that's always cleaned and kind of retained? Would change significantly its relationship to the other limestone structures on the site?
Yes, so one of the main aspects is that we were trying to design is something that feels timeless. And I think the variation of the stone, the nuances on the tones of the stone, the veining, but also the addition of the split face only highlights the natural conditions of the stone and the natural process of aging. So instead of fighting against it, we're recognizing that there will be some weathering and it's actually part of the character of the building. So we're embracing it. Of course, there will be maintenance in the building to mitigate some of these issues. But I think in relationship to the shadows and the articulation of the other facades, it will have like this dialogue.
In terms of the stone, no.
Commissioner, yeah, can you speak into the mic? Thanks.
Stone will probably have interactions with airborne pollutants that will make the stone not look to in five years the way it looks today. That's your best part of the intent.
I'll come soon. I'm just going to talk to you a little bit. We have an incredible buildings team at the museum. And one of the things that Frida and Fire Blender Bell and our many consultants have been working on is what, what is the expected regimen of cleaning for this type of building? So one of the reasons we were so excited about Frida's work is this idea of designing the time. You know, we're a nonprofit. We do our best cleaning, but you know, we're not cleaning every year, our whole facade. It's four city blocks. So we need to design something that will age well and appropriately. And so the one thing that's been really nice for us with the split face and our buildings team agrees is that rather than something very smooth, that if it gets dirt, it becomes very streaky and very obvious. By putting, by creating a facade with an interplay of light and depth and change as it ages, it will age irregularly. And so our thought right now is that we will probably need to clean it about every five years. We are designing a system and coordinating that with Central Park so that we can have a hoist come down and clean the facade about every five years. But that's, that's our plan.
Horizontal elements of the flush with the, with the. Are the, are the, are the horizontal elements of the cellosia flush with the vertical elements?
That is, maybe we can see here in this section, the relationship. So you can see that the horizontal bands are actually in a triangular shape. This creates the possibility of birds not nesting, but also the ease for not the dust to accumulate. So it has its two advantages.
Great. And a question, a question about the landscape. It looks like from a historical perspective, there appears to have been little original intent to the band of landscaping that wraps around this corner of the, of the building. And that it was planted in a kind of a haphazard way over, over time with what seems to be the intention of kind of basically hiding the building with big trees that were just kind of placed where they were placed. And that's being changed significantly. The two biggest changes are the density and variety of the trees and also the topography. The topography is getting a lot steeper, it looks like. And I guess my question to the landscape team is, number one, is it, is it your general sense that, that the tree, the added density and variety of the trees are intended to really kind of push the building into the background or to have some other relation? You know, what's the intended relationship of the, of the landscape to the building, number one? And number two, how do you see people using or not using this newly steepened set of slopes?
Sure, yeah. Now, the slope is, there are some areas that may be a little steeper, but by and large at its steepest, we're going no steeper. The idea behind this planting scheme was really to, as the Central Park Conservancy, be first and foremost thinking about the park user and how one would move through the space. I think as you've noted, this is always, and through our presentation, we've highlighted, it's been a very fairly marginalized landscape. It doesn't really live up to the, the character, the lushness that other areas of the park do. So there are designed lawn areas within this space for people to occupy that will set them out into the landscape. We didn't feel the area up adjacent on the southern slope was, was really a space that is meant to be occupied. It's more one that's meant to be visual, both while you're moving through the park, but then I think also, as you've seen through the architectural presentation, something that's, you know, a filtered view through in the punctuations from the facade.
So, you know, we're, the proposal here is to put a very sexy, very beautiful new building in a place where a relatively unsexy, unbeautiful building was. Is it your intention for people to come up to it and interact with it physically? Is there any way to circulate around it or to it? Or is that generally not the idea?
No, I mean, it's, it's a landscape that's really meant to be not occupied by people. There are locations as you move around to the Petrie Court, just due to the historic design of that space, having it fairly open. It's also a loading area for the art that goes up to the roof, so it functionally needs to maintain that way. So there, it's a bit of both. There, there are spaces where people can be up close to the building, but also spaces where you view it from a distance.
Thank you. Got to think about that selfie moment.
All right, Commissioner Latfee.
I would love to hear a little bit. As you've developed this wonderful scheme that not only, I'm just going to speak of one aspect of it that, you know, opens up this, the new wing and creates this sense of porosity and there's light coming in and you can also have a connection to what's going on outside in the park. Just wanted to know how, could you just speak a little bit about what you were thinking in terms of light? Because on the one hand, bringing light in is, is a very important component. But on the other hand, you don't want to bring in too much light because it is not the best friend of the art. And then also in terms of this sort of inside, outside experience, on, in how many ways or instances are you actually bringing people within the museum outside of it so that they get this dual interaction?
So I think this, this slide helps us to illustrate the locations of the openings. It's a very limited, very thoughtful location of these openings. What you see here, let me try to see the pointer. No, it's not working. But you can see that the openings that are longer on the two facades, maybe the mouse will help. Can you see the pointer? Yes. So this one right here is the cellosia. This one right here is also a cellosia. And the smaller openings right here on the top are the ones that are true openings as well as the one right here below. So the idea is to use light as a guiding tool and also to have this idea of the thresholds or the portals. The cellosia moments are aligned with the circulation paths that move people vertically into the building. So these alignments create that, that movement and that flow that is much needed to, to read the collection in many different ways. They're connected to the stairs. So if we go back to the image that we had right here, and I can show you on the floor plan. Perhaps, well, this is too small, but maybe here we can, we can see it. So these two moments of cellosia are located right here and right here, right in front of the circulation paths. So these are the two moments that create this continuous vertical circulation path that is surrounded by natural light. The rest of the spaces are contained. And of course, we have different degrees of light control depending on the height and the proportions of the galleries and also the program needs for each one of these spaces. So there's, there's a nice range of, and variety for different formats.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions?
And another, another consideration, just a reminder that also the landscape helps with the idea of the extended threshold. We see the facade is a veil, but it's a diaphanous veil that extends towards the landscape. So the landscape can come in, but also it works as these zone of exchange that is porous. So it's an extended threshold. And we also have the two terraces as a relationship to the Manhattan skyline, the city and the park.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? All right, I think we're going to go to public testimony. We may have more questions after that. And we're going to start with somebody on Zoom and then we are going to move to all the people who have signed up to speak in person and then we will go back to Zoom. So while we're taking the first speaker, if anyone here who wishes to speak on this item and you haven't yet filled out a sign-in sheet, please go and get a sign-in sheet from the desk in the ante room and we can add you to the group. All right, and I'll turn it over to Stephen Thompson to take our Zoom speaker.
Thank you. Councilmember Gail Brewer. I'll be promoting you to panelist, after which we ask you to unmute yourself and you will have three minutes to speak.
Great. Thank you very much. I am Gail Brewer. I am the council member for District Six, representing the Upper West Side from the 50th to the 96th Street, parts of Riverside Park and all of Central Park. I am testifying in support of the Metropolitan Museum of Art's proposal to demolish Delilah Atkinson Wallace Wing and construct a new addition, the Tang Wing, and to modify paths within Central Park, relocate a loading accessway and regrade landscaping. The Met has historically been the most visited museum in the United States of America. The proposed changes will enhance accessibility, reduce energy use, improve visual connection to the park from inside, optimize gallery space, especially for modern art, and refresh the adjacent landscaping with direction from the Central Park Conservancy. All of this will benefit the six million people who explore the Met every year. Given the museum's unique status as an individual landmark and historic structure within the park, itself a scenic landmark, the project requires the commission to balance competing considerations. Perhaps most significantly, the commission must evaluate the expansion's impact on visibility for vantage points within the park, and I'm glad you also considered the birds. The commission is considering these proposals in the absence of a modern master plan for the museum. Should you move to approve, please ensure your decision does not set a precedent that allows inappropriate future development. It's my understanding that this proposed expansion is a significant departure from the Met's 1971 ideas and plan, which was approved by the LPC at that time. And finally, I want to thank the Tang family. I was at the New York Historical today and to be talking about the Met today with the Tang name gives me great pleasure. It's a family of extraordinary generosity and decency. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, councilmember. I return it to Chair Carroll.
All right, all right. We have some sign-in sheets, so we will take testimony in person and we'll start with Carrie Butler. And just come up to the mic at the podium and you'll have to just turn the mic on. Maybe we can monitor that. And if you speak into the mic, just state your name and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Great, thank you. And good afternoon, commissioners and LPC staff, and it's nice to be here. My first time ever. My name is Carrie Butler. I am the interim president of the Municipal Arts Society and I am pleased to be here today in support of this project. The Municipal Arts Society is supporting the proposal for the new modern and contemporary wing to replace the existing building designed by Kevin Roche and John Dinkaloo. We note the historic architectural importance of the work by Roche and Dinkaloo and we appreciate the museum has the intention of preserving the other existing wings by this architectural firm, excuse me. The team did present the project to the MAS Preservation and Planning Committee members. And the members found the proposal to be beautiful, noting the thoughtful choice of material, texture and variation of pattern. Members appreciated that the new wing is sited within the same footprint of the existing structure. And the bulk of the new massing has been reduced, reduced from the initial scheme. The museum team has been working with the Central Park Conservancy and this process has improved the design. We appreciate this collaboration as the museum and the park are both very important civic institutions for New Yorkers. Further, the landscape is a welcome improvement to the site, enhancing accessibility and integration within the park and enlivening the somewhat barren existing space behind the café. Committee members did express some similar concerns about the birds and access to the space between the cellosia and the glass. I'm glad that the museum is addressing those concerns and taking measures to mitigate those issues. Thank you again. We support the proposal and thank you for your time.
Do I? You can hand it over to Mark. Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Morrison Heksher.
Good afternoon and thank you for letting us speak. I'm speaking on as, as a private, privately or personally. But I'm doing so because back in 1966, I started my career at the Met. And a few months later, Kevin Roche and John Dinkaloo were hired for the master plan, which then was over about 25 year period completed. And I, I saw it all. I saw Tom Hoving, who had the vision for it. I saw the battles with all the different constituencies. And I saw a genteel, soft-spoken architect who threaded the needle to create the footprint and the plan of the park that, of the museum that got completed. And imagine a proposal of this scope and actually finishing it within about 25 years. A remarkable achievement, I think. And there was a price to it, which was you couldn't deal in great detail with every facet of it. And I had the benefit after 20 years of living, if you will, within the American Wing building that he had designed, to spend another decade with him personally, working on changing it, revising it, improving it. Kevin was particularly interested in serving his clients and in solving problems. Not certainly in the case of the Met, continuing to make a monument to himself. So my sense is that he would have no problem with the idea of demolishing the L A W Wing. I, now I've, I wanted to say something else and I'm trying to think what it is. And well, let me talk about the facade because it's, it's the major thing under discussion today. And, and what amazed me is the, the care and attention, the thought being, being put into this wing by Frida and her team and working with the Met is extraordinary and it is so much greater than was possible in the past. So, so that we're looking at a refined piece of work, which in that respect is different from the rest of the exterior of the Roche building, which was entirely designed based on the political realities of the sixties. So, so I was fascinated by looking at the pictures of the Oakland Museum, one of Kevin's early, well, one of the two buildings that is why he got the commission to do the Met in the first place. And the setbacks, the, the.
I'm so sorry. Could you please summarize the remainder of your testimony? Each testifier has three minutes to speak.
I can't hear.
You can just summarize or.
In summary, I'm delighted. I would love to tell stories. I, I'm thrilled that this process has gotten this far and I hope to live, to see this wonderful building built. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right, Zainab Taran. All right, Zainab Turan.
Thank you, Chair Carroll, commissioners. Hi, my name is Zainab Turan. I'm speaking on behalf of Friends of the Upper East Side. Friends Preservation Committee is happy to support this thoughtful and respectful contemporary design proposed for this cherished New York City landmark. We commend the applicant for improving the gallery spaces and accessibility while maintaining the same footprint. Furthermore, we believe the proposed facade will foster an enhanced relationship to the interior spaces, between the interior spaces and the adjacent park. The Preservation Committee notes that the current drawings would benefit from further detail in order to facilitate a comprehensive understanding of the new wing's visual impact from various perspectives along Fifth Avenue. The current slides 104 through 106 do not clearly illustrate the wing's volume as it would be seen from these different vantage points, as the tree canopy obscures the view. Therefore, we request that the client provide additional vantage points in the form of drawings or renderings, specifically illustrating how the new wing will appear as one approaches it from different angles across Fifth Avenue. In addition, we would appreciate the inclusion of a full Fifth Avenue elevation drawing that clearly depicts the new wing in its entirety as part of the submitted materials. We would also like to see a visual comparison of the new volume alongside the Lila Atkinson Wing, as outlined in the Roche-Dinkaloo Master Plan. To clearly illustrate the volumetric relationship between the existing structure and the proposed new wing, we suggest providing either a single extonometric drawing showing the existing volume in dotted lines or relate with the new volume or side-by-side slide presentation comparing the old and new volumes. Finally, the committee raises a significant concern regarding the proposed removal of 13 mature trees. We request a clear and detailed restatement of the reasons necessitating this removal as articulated by Central Park Conservancy. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Kyle Johnson.
I will try to read this fast with the help of my faithful bank of fire. Good afternoon, Chair Carroll and commissioners. My name is Kyle Johnson. As you just heard, I'm a board member of DACA-MOMA U.S., New York Tri-State, the local chapter of the international organization devoted to promoting and preserving important examples of modern architecture, landscape design, and planning. Our board appreciates the invitation over the last few months, actually, of the Metropolitan Museum to several presentations by museum staff and their architects, the Escobedo and the Firebender Bell, explaining the shortcomings of the existing Lila Atkinson Wallace Wing and the need to accommodate a new program. Consequently, we do not object to the proposed demolition and replacement of the Wallace Wing, designed by noted modern architect Kevin Roche. The structure was not designed to accommodate a specific program, but rather to complete a master plan for the museum designed by Kevin Roche, John Dinkaloo, and associates, which was enthusiastically touted by the museum, lauded by critics, and approved by various public bodies, including the Landmark Preservation Commission. The master plan replaced a hodgepodge of unrelated structures on the Central Park side of the museum, built over decades, with a unified, cohesive, and symmetrical composition reminiscent of the museum's Fifth Avenue face. We believe that that adopted and approved master plan and the resultant symmetrical Central Park face to be an important aspect of the museum's physical image in the city, as it has been with us now for several decades. Consequently, we believe the new Tang Wing in the southwest corner of the museum should match the exterior envelope of the American Wing in the northwest corner, as did the predecessor Wallace Wing. While limited variations in the cladding might be acceptable, such as introducing perforations and light slots within the Masonry portions of the exterior, as in the proposed design, or incorporating portions of printed or opaque splendor glass within the canted glass portion to suit interior requirements, we believe that the exterior envelope, not just the footprint and perimeter height, should literally match the configuration of the equivalent American Wing, just as the two McKimbe and White signed wings on Fifth Avenue, or the Sackler and Rockefeller wings on the museum's park-facing flanks, which can't even be seen at the same time, match each other. Central Park would also benefit from this approach, as the American Wing and existing Wallace Wing...
I'm so sorry. Could you please summarize the remainder of your testimony?
Are designed to be...
You have surpassed three minutes.
Be deferential, natural backdrop, neutral backdrop to the park, while the current Tang Wing proposal imposes a more assertive and bulky presence on the park. Last conclusion here. We urge the commissioners to commission to insist that the museum adhere to its own adopted 1970 master plan commitments and modify the design of the new wing in accordance with the approved Roche-Dinkaloo master plan with inherent symmetrical composition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Blair Walsh.
Good afternoon, Chair Carroll and commissioners. I'm Blair Walsh, speaking on behalf of the New York Landmarks Conservancy. The Conservancy's Public Policy Committee has had several briefings on this proposal and wishes to thank the team from the Met for meeting with them at our office on-site and at the architect's office. The Met team made it clear that the Wallace Wing creates significant challenges for the museum. It is well within their purview to search for a solution. However, the question before the commission today is whether this proposal for a new wing is an appropriate alteration to this landmark. Our committee spent a great deal of time considering this question. They concluded that it would not be appropriate, as it would disrupt the Roche-Dinkaloo master plan and stand alone and apart from this landmark. The Met's first century featured the work of many architects. They gave the institution a majestic facade along Fifth Avenue, which offers a masterclass in how the designs of different architects can form an impressive composition, a less cohesive rear facade facing Central Park, and an interior that called for improvement of circulation, gallery, and back office space. Toward the end of that first century, the Met also needed to house the Temple of Dendor and the Lehman Collection. The Roche-Dinkaloo master plan responded to these needs. It added gallery space and initiated a reorganization of the interior. It also unified the architecture of the rear and side facades. The new wings were built on axis with the rest of the buildings in asymmetrical massing. They deferred to the grandeur of Fifth Avenue with simplified volumes and minimal limestone and glass facades that were a contemporary interpretation of the Fifth Avenue facade. The master plan proposal attracted controversy, at least in part, for the expansion into the park, and it is by no means perfect. But in the end, it was built with the Landmarks Commission's approval. Demolition of the Wallace Wing and the proposed replacement essentially disassembles it. The proposed building does not present as an integral part of the landmark. Instead, it's a facade enclosing a program, and that facade does not strongly relate to the buildings from the first century or the Roche-Dinkaloo master plan. With multiple roof lines and volumes, it loses the symmetry that is fixed into Fifth Avenue in the master plan. The proposed exterior attempts to acknowledge the historic buildings with a limestone facade and some roof lines that match the existing roofs, but overall, it is not of a piece with this landmark. If the Met cannot find a solution that reuses the wing, we believe there has to be a replacement that better reinforces the architectural goals of the master plan and is a more appropriate addition to this extraordinary landmark. Thank you for the opportunity to express the Conservancy's views.
Thank you. Adam Broadhein.
Good afternoon. I represent Community Board Seven as chair of their Preservation Committee. We all know that the community boards surrounding Central Park share custody of Central Park, but I will note that Fifth Avenue is the dividing line between east and west. So the Metropolitan Museum is very clearly on the Upper West Side, and so it is very important to us on the Upper West Side. This is going to be how all of us on the Upper West Side get to the Met. We approach from the west, so this is a really critical project. We had two great meetings with many members of the public to discuss this, and we are uniformly in favor of the design. We really love it. We really appreciate it. Our resolution is kind of bland. I apologize for that, but there was a tremendous amount of enthusiasm and support for what a fantastic job everyone has done on this project. The one tiny little note we had is if there is any way to save any additional trees, people on the Upper West Side, we love our trees. So if there's a way to save one more of those trees, we'd love it. Otherwise, we thought it was really phenomenal and a great addition to the museum and very appropriate. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. Anyone joining us via Zoom who would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be Lucy Levine. Lucy, I'll be promoting you to panelist, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Hi, commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. The HTC Public Review Committee was unable to come to a consensus on the appropriateness of this proposal. We were largely impressed by the Escobedo design itself and agree that taking down Kevin Roche's structure and replacing it with a more functional and beautiful design would be a good thing. But we were not completely comfortable with the abandonment of the Roche master plan, and in particular, with the symmetry of the composition as it faces the park. We understand that that symmetry is almost impossible to comprehend from the park, but we are nonetheless concerned about the issue. Additionally, we worry somewhat about the bulk of the new structure relative to other parts of the building. And we voice these concerns as a means of challenging the design team to speak to how they're thinking about this aspect of the project and hope that it will turn into a discussion between the commissioners. We also note that the design of the limestone screening wall, as currently detailed, may be a wonderful place for birds to roost. We thank you for taking this into consideration. Finally, we are hugely appreciative of this project and the thoughtful, elegant presentation and design. We are excited to see the Met build a new structure and add these galleries to the institution. We are also excited and look forward to New York City getting a new building from this extremely talented architect and her collaborators. But we are also eager to hear the commission's discussion of the design and the appropriateness of abandoning the Roche master plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be John Graham. Mr. Graham, if you could please unmute yourself.
I apologize, commissioners. John Graham, for the Victorian Society in New York. It's interesting to note that the historic buildings that are part of the Met, going back to the original Calvert-Vox Building, have been adopted many times and continue to be used by the museum. Yet, one of its newest buildings was apparently so poorly designed and inflexible that it's to be demolished, an enormous waste of resources. One of the assurances is that the new wing is being designed in a way that it won't meet the same fate in 40 years. The Roche-Dinkaloo master plan, which this edition violates, was intended to create a unified park-facing western facade. The large areas of exposed glass of the Roche buildings are intended to recall historic museum skylights and the greenhouses that were original to Central Park. We question whether the master plan in the end resulted in a successful and harmonious relationship with the park landscape, and we acknowledge that the symmetry and unity of the western facade aren't easily discernible from within the park in some seasons. Nevertheless, we think there is value in retaining the symmetry and essential outlines of the existing building in accordance with the approved and completed Roche-Dinkaloo master plan. We do not think it appropriate to introduce a completely new design in one corner, unrelated to anything else on the building and not part of any plan, to produce a coherent unified facade, which has an appropriate and subservient relationship to the Central Park landscape. The applicant states that the new wing enhances visual connections to Central Park. Stating this compatibility doesn't make it so. Despite maintaining the footprint of the existing wing, the proposed wing is far bulkier and will be much more visible from within the park. We see nothing about the massing or detail that relates successfully to a 19th-century English Romantic-style park. Perhaps the applicant is referring to the fact that the park can be seen from many of the windows and terraces on the new wing, but that is the wrong focus. In a scenic landmark, how the building is seen from the park is the more important consideration. A large amount of planting is proposed to obscure the new wing. That says to us that there's something wrong with the architecture's relationship to the park. By the way, many mature trees, including elms, are proposed for removal, a fact that receives almost no attention in this massive 176-slide presentation. We note, finally, that the new wing appears to include no back-of-house space for conservation work and exhibit preparation. Additionally, few details are provided of the new museum loading access route to the west facade, which seems to be how artworks for this wing will come and go. A new straight, 12-foot-wide drivable grass...
Sorry, if you could please summarize the remainder of your testimony. You've surpassed three minutes.
We're concerned that additional interventions for delivery artwork will be needed at the new entrance on the west, additions which will be very difficult for the commission to deny. Therefore, the museum should address these operational issues now. Thank you very much, commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Jamie Neary. I'll be promoting you to panelist, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Jamie Neary, and I'm grateful for this opportunity to express my support of the Tang Wing wearing two hats. First, as the current chair of the Met's Volunteer Organization, a group of 1,000 active volunteers who serve the needs of the museum and its diverse visitors. I'm excited about the new wing, because it'll make the Modern and Contemporary Collection more accessible on multiple levels for all of our visitors. Our visitor-experience volunteers know firsthand the challenges of helping someone using a wheelchair or stroller navigate the current galleries. The new wing will be physically accessible for everyone. In addition, with increased gallery space, visitors will enjoy having more of the Modern and Contemporary Collection on view at once. Our volunteer tour guides especially look forward to the physical integration of the Tang Wing with its surrounding collection areas. This new design will help visitors make cross-cultural connections and invite them to focus on what brings people together as opposed to demarcating differences. The second hat I wear today is out of a parent. differences. The second hat I wear today is out of a parent. My kids have grown up in the Met, walking the streets nearby and playing in the park in which the building sits. Our family has spent countless afternoons in the museum following morning baseball games on the great lawn, and anyone who has endured an 8-and-under kid pitch doubleheader will know just what a respite the museum has been for us. Try as I might to share my personal interests in the ancient world with my children, from the beginning, they felt the pull to the modern and contemporary collection. One of my favorite parenting moments was watching my son work on a middle school art project for which he was asked to choose a modern or contemporary artist and create a personal interpretation of their work. Kevin chose Marston Hartley's portrait of a German officer, an abstract portrait that appealed to him because of its large scale, bold colors, and military pageantry. Kevin's version portrait of an eighth grader replaced the military symbols with baseballs, hockey sticks, and even an Xbox controller, and it included flags representing his Irish heritage, school pride, and Catholic faith. Like many teenage boys, Kevin does not verbally share much about his feelings, so it was incredible for me to see my son express himself and explore his identity in this way. The Tang Wing with its Celestia facade that invites parkgoers and hopefully some more baseball players into the galleries offers an incredible opportunity for visitors of all ages to experience the collection and see themselves in the art. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Megan from Landmark West.
Hello Commissioners, Megan Fitzpatrick, speaking on behalf of Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee would like to acknowledge the time the Met spent explaining the project to us in great detail. We appreciate that an institution such as the Met is upholding standards and community engagement for a project of this magnitude. Designing additions to landmarks often poses a special challenge. Museums around the world address this issue regularly with many solutions and varied degrees of success. In New York alone, the Frick and New York Historical chose to continue their eclectic classical designs. The American Museum of Natural History built a startingly contrasting addition to a building that had previously favored Romanesque and Beaux-Arts styles. The Whitney, after a few tries, gave up altogether and moved downtown. The Met, the largest and arguably most prestigious of our museums, faces special challenges within its location in one of the most important parks nationwide. Its original box-and-mold building conceived as a jewel in the park and facing inward has been completely subsumed by additions, especially the Hunt, McKimmeade, and White entrance on Fifth Avenue. When faced with the prospect of several new additions in the 1960s, the museum wisely commissioned the 1971 Master Plan to ensure each iteration related to the next. The Roche-Dinkleville Plan addresses the need for modern gallery space while working to minimize the impact on its host, the park. The use of multi-pain reflective glass reminiscent of the skylights of the older buildings is a clever response to the challenge. The angled surfaces further reduce the building's impact. All of the modern facades, with some exceptions, adhere. Once again, the museum is faced with a need for expansion, which is only to be expected of such a great institution. It is not for us to comment on alternatives such as satellite sites in addition to the cloisters, except to the extent that the Commission should note this is a viable alternative to expansion on site. Here, the proposed addition abandons principal devices of the Master Plan: symmetry, sequence, and skylights, and adopts an admittedly innovative facade designed for the proposed addition. Appealing as this would be at an independent building on a different site, the scheme does nothing to emulate the goals of the Pulitzer Prize-winning architect. Instead, the proposal is boxy, imposing, very wide, and very large. Is it possible to minimize the effect of this bulk directly attached to an individual landmark on the beloved park? Perhaps, but with this design, we certainly see none of that goal explored, and until it is, we will not know. Is this proposal acceptable as presented? No, for its incongruity with clever elements of the Master Plan, for its lack of attempts at minimizing the effect of the bulk, and lastly, for the unmitigated bulk itself. As much as our committee appreciates the immense effort and thorough presentation, we cannot support it fully and believe a revised plan should be drafted. We look forward to seeing what they can do. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Sheridan Paulson.
Good afternoon Commissioners and Chair Carroll. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. It is a pleasure to be able to testify when you get to see an incredibly thorough and an incredibly intelligent presentation that is clear and very complete. And in the issue of master plans, they're, master plans are meant to be resolved over time because conditions change. One of the most significant things about the current wing is that the ceiling heights are incredibly low and the circulation has never been clear. This design accomplishes all of that within a new facade that amazingly channels the work of Kevin Roche and John Dinkleville. When you look at, and I'm glad they included it, the Oakland Museum, which utilized textures and other components and incorporated terraces, this, this new massing relates significantly to Roche's work. And in the design of the vertical rectangles that break up the facade and staging them up the facade, it recalls the, the variegation in the appearance of the grids on the glass of the glazed additions designed by their firm. I think this is an amazing presentation. It is an amazing design, and I wholeheartedly support this and hope that the Commission does too. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. If there are any other members of the public joining us via Zoom who would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Okay, seeing none, I will note for the record that LPC received letters of support from State Senators Liz Kruger, Jose Amserano, and Brad Hoileman Siegel, State Assembly Member Michael Lasher, and Borough President Mark Levine. Manhattan Community Boards 5, 7, 8, 10, and 11 passed resolutions recommending approval. In written testimony, the Olmsted Network notes concerns regarding the addition's impact on the park. In written testimony, Roche Modern, formerly KRJDA, supports the proposal but includes recommendations for changes to the park-facing facade. One individual opposes.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the applicant team if you'd like to respond to any of the comments we've heard today.
Boring one, but about loading, I did want to clarify that we currently use that area for loading art. There's no change in our operation. We're actually just coordinating our work better with the Central Park Conservancy now in regards to how we load in and when we do it and how it looks to the parkgoer. And I don't know if Nick wants to speak to, we're changing some of the landscape there too, to improve that loading access. But there's no, there's no increase in activity. We have the benefit at the Met of being four city blocks. We have a loading dock. We have offices. We have art storage. We have restaurants. Those are in other locations in the museum. This is about galleries, and that truly is the program. I don't know if you want to add anything?
Sure, yeah. I think from the Conservancy, we see this as an opportunity to definitely, to make that landscape better with the removal of the asphalt section that comes off of East Drive and replacing that with a drivable grass surface. A lot of the lawns adjacent to that get fairly degraded by foot traffic as people thinking that is a path. So we're very much in support of working with the Met to relocate that and create a better landscape in this location. I also did want to just comment on the trees. At the Central Park Conservancy, we do not take the removal of trees very, very lightly. We've worked very closely with the Parks Department and the Met on this. And, you know, the design of the building, it requires a significant amount of regrading for us to be able to integrate this landscape with the park. And the trees needed to be removed as a result of that is something we've studied quite a bit. So, and as we spoke to earlier, not to increase the burn steepness and really smooth out and make this topography that has a very thoughtful grading, something that this area of the park really has not had within existence. We really, you know, think that this is a great opportunity for us to work with the Met and do that on this project. And we've taken great care into proposing a design that we feel is best for the integration of the park and the integration of the two programs with the addition of the 40 to 50 new trees.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? Right, not seeing any questions, we will close the hearing and move to our discussion. Commissioner Lutfi, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed. I want to thank the applicants for your very thoughtful and thorough presentation. I want to thank all members of the public for participating today. So Commissioners, we have two applications before us. So one is for changes to the landscape in the Central Park scenic landmark, and the other one is for the replacement of the Lila Atchison Wallace wing with the new Tang Wing. So we must remember to speak about both in our comments. And just to provide some context for your review and for our discussion, I want to start with some observations on the evolution of the museum. As was noted in the presentation, there have been four master plans developed to guide the Met and its future expansion and as it relates to Central Park, all in this location, all covering a similar area of the park. And it is relevant to note that the Roche-Dinkleville Plan was developed at a time when the Commission's jurisdiction was limited to the museum itself. It was prior to the 1974 Amendment to the Landmarks Law that allowed for scenic landmarks. And Central, it was prior to the designation of Central Park as a scenic landmark. And so I believe that the Master Plan should and could be understood in two different ways, both as a programmatic change and in its design and its design's relation to its context. So, and first, I would say that in, in reviewing applications for other cultural institutions, we have often considered program as part of their intended and educational mission and have considered that in our review. So I think programmatically, this represents a time-specific best estimate of the future needs. And the exterior design of the Master Plan represented an architectural approach for relating to Central Park as well as a desire at the time to unify what was otherwise a heterogeneous architectural development of the museum campus. And so from my perspective, the Master Plan was never intended to cap the programmatic needs of the museum, and the design, like all architectural designs, can potentially be altered using concepts of appropriateness to determine the impacts on the significant architectural features and fabric. And, and then with respect to the Roche-Dinkleville Master Plan, I think it's also important to note that, and this was raised in the testimony as well, that the Master Plan can truly only be appreciated from a bird's eye view and from architectural plans and elevations. So due to the topography, the trees, and other plantings, the western facade cannot be viewed in its entirety, unlike the Fifth Avenue primary facade. And so due to these factors, I think the two-end pavilions are not seen in the context or experienced in the context of each other. And I think that allows for an opportunity for some alterations or replacement here with something different. And, and I think it's also relevant to note that a large portion of the Roche-Dinkleville Master Plan and design aesthetic will remain here as well and as part of this application. And of course, any future changes would be subject to an equally robust public hearing and review process. So with that to sort of provide some context, I just again want to say our comments should address the appropriateness of the new building and its relationship to the variety of historic layers of the campus, including the Roche-Dinkleville Plan and its relationship to the scenic landmark. And in addition, we must remember to comment on the changes to the park itself. All right, with that, Commissioner Ginsburg, would you like to start?
Thank you. Yes. So first, I want to say I appreciate both the presentation by the team and the discussion and comments from the number of people. And to quote, a quote attributed to Kenneth Jackson but not documented, "The only constant in New York is change." And so thinking about this proposal, I'm thinking about that. I also am very familiar with the building, having grown up a few blocks away. And so when I went to the Southern Parking Lot, when the Temple of Dender arrived in pieces and was stored for about five years in what was a tennis bubble, and you could look in the clear, sort of clear plastic windows and see some blocks in the, in there. And I'd also note that since the second architect worked on the Met, it has been eclectic. I think you said there were 18 buildings, and there are definitely a number of different styles. And as the Roche-Dinkleville Plan was implemented, I explored the different additions. I also spent a lot of time in the park. And the museum before and even after the plan sort of has the backside to the park. And it's always felt that way. And as Chair Carroll has pointed out, you cannot perceive that whole backside at any point. So the symmetry is somewhat meaningless. And, and the uniform aesthetic may not be as important. And I would note that although the aesthetics of the symmetry of the Roche-Dinkleville Plan will be modified here, the plan itself as a plan is not really modified since the footprint is the same. And, and so we're not talking about an expansion or a change. I realize internally, we're talking about significant changes to improve circulation, et cetera, which is also what the Roche-Dinkleville Plan was doing. So with that, I, I think this is a thoughtful and creative design that will improve the museum and with the landscaping will improve the park side of the museum. I'd also very, I also want to note and very appreciative of the discussion of sustainability. And this may be the first presentation, my time on the Commission, where carbon footprint, both operational and bodied carbon has been talked about. And I'm really glad you're thinking about that and greatly appreciate that. So with that said, I can find this appropriate and support it.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Goldblum.
Hey. This is one of those moments where I feel very fortunate to be on the Commission. This is an important, important project. A few things to note. When I heard that pre-Testo Beta was awarded the project, I was like, wow, that is a real bold move. And then I realized that, you know, can you, and then I realized that Kevin Roche, Kevin Roche was the same age as he is, according to the internet anyway. And I think that it's, it displays the history of the institution's willingness to do things that are interesting and to try to not play it necessarily very safely. And I think that, for the institution's great credit. I, I count myself as one of the 2 million regular New Yorkers visiting pretty much once a week. And from a functional perspective, I should probably disqualify myself as having a vested interest in the improvement of the modern wing and the circulation that connects it to the, the rest of the museum. I think those are all deeply laudable goals from, from a functional perspective. But that's not our job here. Our job here is to try to figure out whether the building and the landscape modifications that are proposed are appropriate from the perspective of the Landmarks Law. So I first try to think about the Master Plan. The Master Plan, you know, interestingly, as shown in the, you know, by, by the applicants, you know, very, very, very richly detailed proposal here, has not changed significantly from the box-and-mold time. All right, I'll get closer. And that's interesting, you know, of all the change and of all the dynamism and of all the variety and style, the actual footprint, disregarding the courts, has remained pretty similar. It's a big box with corner nodes and a center, and it's remained a symmetrical footprint. That said, I think that the realization of that footprint has demonstrated, as Mark said, dramatic aesthetic variation. You can find the distance between the original Victorian design and Hunt as being drastic and dramatically reversing the aesthetic of, of its predecessor. Whereas McKimmeade and White's additions were sought to extend the language of Hunt with alignments and moldings, materials, classical detailing into a visually distinct but harmonious relationship with the Hunt Center. I think that it would be fair to characterize the Roche-Dinkleville Edition as not being in the harmonious department. But I try to guard myself from separating aesthetic judgments from historical ones, whereas I might not find- Whereas I might not find this particular version of Roche-Dinkaloo's oeuvre to be their high point. I don't think it's a particularly good example of their enormous talents, at least from the outside. I think that we have to kind of separate ourselves from that frame of mind and say, you know, it's not, you know, our job is not aesthetics, our job is history. And does the, does the Lila Atchison Wallace Wing, as it's currently configured, merit protection based on its historic importance? Now Sarah added some important caveats that it kind of predates, you know, it's the commission, it wasn't a commission sanctioned aesthetic at the time. Nevertheless, it's part of the process that we're looking at. It's part of the artifact we're looking at.
Yeah, I should just, the commission did review the master plan back in the seventies. It just was prior to the Central Park.
Okay, even better. So given that this wasn't actually a landmark approved design, I mean, I think that the things that the commission may have hung its hat on were the symmetry, the use of limestone, the use of relatively plain, flat limestone that kind of echoed the front facade. And, you know, like Mark said, the understanding that this was kind of the back of the house and that therefore it merited a certain blankness. I think that given, given its, you know, the issues that we've talked about, about that you really don't perceive the symmetry and that the museum has had a history of dramatic variation, architectural style, I think that the demolition of the Roche-Dinkaloo Building is appropriate. And I think that, I think I can find the proposed addition to be consistent with the kind of layout intentions of the master plan in volume and in positioning. And as the presentation detailed, in kind of the oscillation between solid and glazed pavilions. So I think that that works. I think as an architectural object, there's no question that this is a refined and elegant and thoughtful design that will be an addition, a proud addition to New York City's architectural heritage. Whether or not I think it's the right addition, again, from a historic perspective to this building, is a different matter, though. And I heard very clearly the comments of some who testified about various issues related to that. I think that there's two factors for me that give me pause. And I don't know that they give me pause sufficiently to feel that it's inappropriate, but I think that they give me pause to question details of the proposal. I mean, I love the facade, I love the texture of it. I think it's, it's the first new building at the site, you know, that actually looked outwards as opposed to inwards with any level of articulation and kind of love for the public. And that's to its credit. However, if you look at the rear elevation, either in part or in whole, what you notice is that there is one line that's held on this facade. And that's the top of the Petri Court glass wall, which kind of goes all the way across the facade, if I'm not mistaken. It certainly seems to be symmetrical on both sides. And the fact that Frida noted that it was an alignment point on her facade between two junctures of the limestone cellosia pattern was significant, but the fact that the parapets, both on the main level and on the upper level, middle level, I guess, missed by one module is to me unfortunate. I think that the connectivity of the pavilion to the rest of the facade would have been enhanced with the retention of that significant line. And if you look at the Roche-Dinkaloo predecessor, which didn't have very much to speak for it, it did have an intention to hold that line as that volume turned the corner. The limestone met the glass, and then that odd, mansured kind of chamfer kind of made the difference to get them to the height that Frida's parapet reaches today. So I think that, depending on what I just think, I think it would not, it would not be functionally undoable for them to consider modifying either the position or deep design of that parapet and more importantly, even on the one above it, so that that one principal line were held. I do think that that would be a positive addition. I also think that what's important about the cellosia design is the fact that it does, at certain points, align with the grid of the Petri Court. And to the extent that that is something that can be explored by the design team, I think that would be a really good idea. I don't think you need to have a lining of, you know, one to one. But picking out alignments and having them work are the kind of things that make this project less of an impact relationship and more of a weaving relationship, which was, I think, a key metaphor in Frida's presentation. In terms of the landscape, I think that the changes to the terrain and to the plantings are generally appropriate. However, I think since a major selling point of the building is its attempt to reintegrate with the park and its providing of windows and screened windows that allow for interaction visually between the park and the museum interior, which was, you know, definitely not what predecessor offered, the opportunity for being next to the building or having a way of approaching the building or a physical relationship to it would be something that would be advisable.
Thank you, Commissioner Jefferson.
I think the concept of the new addition, because it takes space and light and proportion, tries to use that to define.
Try to speak up.
Can you hear me now?
No.
If you're leaning too much, I don't see you. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? I think the proposed design is amazingly brilliant for many reasons. One of them is because using light and space and proportions of space to create an environment for a museum is such a powerful architectural idea. I think the stepping down, the facade has kind of just volumetric stepping down, works well because it doesn't have to align with anything. It's a new idea and it works within the space and the context that it's supposed to fit in. I do think that the park adjustments are necessary because of the volumetric change. And it's appropriate for the landscape to work with the volume, the new architecture. And I just think that subtlety of light, if it works, if it does work, would be very, very beautiful. And that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Master.
I'm going to go ahead and start by talking about the landscaping, the Central Park landscaping. I can find it appropriate because you're essentially trying to improve access. I understand that it's disappointing that they have removed some trees, but they're going to be planting 30 to 40 additional trees and planting. I think that it's going to be important in order to, I guess, make it more visually interesting because you're going to have that view from the inside. So I can find that part of it appropriate. In terms of replacing the, I'll call it the LAW Wing, as Sarah had said, you know, we have to think about the Roche-Dinkaloo Master Plan in two ways, one programmatic and then two design. On a programmatic level, I think that the Met has shown that they do need additional gallery space and that in terms of access, that the space was not well designed. So I can find that programmatically, that the change is necessary. In terms of design, I do believe that there are many architectural styles throughout this complex. And so I don't think introducing this new, more contemporary design big impact. And I do think that it does include the materials that Roche-Dinkaloo had noted, including limestone and glass. So I can find the design element within this, within this footprint also appropriate. So I can accept both the Central Park changes as well as the new addition here.
Thank you, Commissioner Chu.
Okay. Yes, thank you very much for the very complete and informative presentation. It goes without saying that the Met is one of the most important international landmarks in terms of the culture and the museum and what they display and their constant work of collections into the future. I really appreciate Director Holian's comments about what the museum needs. I think that the master plan always has to reflect really the true needs of the institution itself. And what we look at is the physical presence of it and how it's played out, but the needs come from the user, in this case, the institution. And that really helps us understand what they envision and what really would make this museum better for them into decades into the future. So that's very useful. In terms of the Roche-Dinkaloo Master Plan, when I look at this proposal, I think that the footprint is a big deal. I feel that in my mind, for the most part, this does follow the master plan of the Roche-Dinkaloo design. I think that what was built before, as we've said and other commissioners have noted, does very much feel like the back of the museum. And I think that that may have been a part of the intent initially. What I really appreciate about this is that I don't feel like I'm looking at big blank masses of nothing. And that's really my feeling about the exterior of the existing building right now. It doesn't engage the public, it doesn't have any sense of human scale. This design to me screams scale, proportion and engagement. And that's what I like about it. I'm very attracted to this for a couple of reasons. It's very restrained, it's not overly articulated, because I think, again, the master plan was about monolithic expression. It's able to obtain that sense of grandeur and scale, but it still gives me a sense of human scale. The choice of using these elements that do change vertically in terms of the perspective looking up, I think that's an interesting concept, been used in the past, and I think it could create a very interesting facade visually. But I also think that the elements that make up this facade are essentially all pieces that could be carried by a person. And to me, that expresses craft. And that's what I think was missing in the existing. It brings something, if I look at the south elevation of this proposal, now I can see a relationship between the McKimme and White on Fifth and this side, which is previously the back. I feel like it's another front. I think it adds tremendously to the experience from the park side, whereas before I felt like it was shouldered or backed to it. The glassy zone does address it, but the previous or the existing LAW Wing really feels like the back of a house building right there. The questions that I think come up or the concerns about not following the master plan, from what I can see, are really about the mass of the cant. Everything else, to me, looks more or less in keeping with the massing. The solid and glass box concept that was one of the initial ideas of the master plan, I think this actually reinforces. It creates a corner, but it creates a corner that I think now is three dimensional and addresses two directions as opposed to really just quite a frontal, two-dimensional design that is there right now. And a south facade has zero scale and is just flat and massive. So I really appreciate this texture. I like that the scale relates to the curtain wall adjacent to it. I don't personally have an issue with the fact that it is unabashedly forward into the park and doesn't try to cant itself. I like the balcony and the terraces. I think that maybe adding some green to the first podium level at the setback might help reduce the sense of mass, because it will give a bit of a difference between the setback beyond it, which might help some concerns about it feeling overly massive. But I also recognize that there are lots of trees here. I think that us thinking about the master plan two bookends and what was from the big picture seen from aerial bird's eye view, again, as we've all noted, is never experienced on site at a human scale. And I think it's kind of a very simplistic view of this building. There's a lot more richness and detail that needs to follow that simple massing diagram, which I think is evident and that it's achieved in this proposal. Let's see, I really liked the explanation of the interior and that's why I asked a lot about it. I think that the interior experience of a museum is extremely important in terms of how successful it is. And that also leads to how long-term and how much this design will last and be useful to the institution into the future. So that's very, very important. And the museum needs to do these things. Accessibility, huge, clarity of circulation. Clearly, if you look at those sections, the existing floor to floors are insufficient. It looks like the generous, tall gallery spaces, some with light, most without. Seems appropriate to me. And I really appreciate the sense of the terraces on the corner. That's probably some of the great, best views. And now as a public visitor, I can experience the park like I've never had before. So I think that the architectural proposal here, I think, is appropriate. The landscape, I do share a little bit of Michael's comment. It was my first thought is essentially it's the same design, but it is accessible, which I think is very important. But it is a buffer between the park and the experience and the path and the building. I kept hoping to be able to come up to, because I think the first thing everyone's going to want to do is touch that facade. Hopefully, they can climb it because the first proportion is nine feet tall. But I don't know, maybe you can wedge and go up, but that's something for them to think about. But it would be nice to be able to get up close to it. You will be able to do it at the upper levels, I agree. I don't think that's essential to it because it really has to do with security and control. I understand that. That's really a lot about the museum's sense of circulation, control, access. But even outdoor space that allows you up to the exterior would be appreciated. Compliments, I think it's a really nice proposal. It's sensitive and elegant, but monumental at the same time.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Lutfi.
I also want to thank the team, the broad team here, the museum, the architectural team, and of course, the Central Park Conservancy for pulling together a really interesting, I'm just going to say, I think it's a wonderful plan, that is going to, has the potential to aid an important cultural institution in its growth, enhance the communication between that cultural institution and the outside, and potentially draw people in from the outside and people in the museum to the outside. I think it's a really smart, well-designed, conceptually and physically plan that is all about the future, the future of institutions, the future of a public space and the future of our city. And I want to step back for one second and talk about master plan, since I was very involved in former life in creating a very important cultural master plan in downtown Brooklyn with an amazing architectural team. And in combination with arts. Brooklyn with an amazing architectural team and in combination with art groups. And I want to say that, from my perspective, master plans are not meant to be rigid. It's impossible. You know, there's always an underlying, important foundation that remains. But these are like living, breathing kinds of organisms that have to be changed and modified as things change in the natural landscape and in, you know, foreign entity and in the world. And so I think while it's nice to wish that everything stays constant, it's not necessarily the best way of moving forward. Likewise, I really have to commend the Metropolitan Museum for the forward-thinking role it has taken on, not just now. Having grown up in New York and gone to the museum as a kid, a kid from Brooklyn who took the subway there, and when I first saw the Temple of Dendur, just to speak to Mark, I mean, I couldn't believe it. And it was a big change in the museum and one that, at the time, you know, wasn't embraced by all, but it was an important shift then and there. And I think that the leaders of the museum, over time, from my experience, have embraced this notion of serving their, the people, the children, the families that come there in a way that they are trying to, you know, provide them with the most current, most recent information and art, and they connect, the museum connects it to what's been there from the beginning. And that makes you continue to be relevant in the world. And in order to be relevant, sometimes, you know, your architecture has to change. There was no modern art in this museum when I was a kid. And that is why, you know, the L.A.W. wing, you know, is one with lower ceilings. But when I watched, I have to say, I had mixed feelings initially when I saw the, you know, the Met taking on modern art. And then I thought, you know, this is brilliant. This is brilliant. The Met is staying relevant. And now, this step is going to make a move that's going to continue its growth and relevance into the future, is going to reach the 6 million-plus people who come every year, and, you know, open new doors and present new work to them in a way that will always want them to come back. So that's my, you know, overarching statement. As part of that, I do want to say that, you know, modern building makes sense. It's, this happens, you know, modern architecture, modern wings are attached to older buildings in Europe all the time. And they sort of snap in, in a wonderful way, and then connect to not only what's there, but open doors. And here, in this building, which remains on the same footprint as the L.A.W. wing, even though it's a little bigger, which I believe it needs to be, you know, as I said, it's, you know, with this glass, it's, and as my colleagues have said, you know, it's opening its back door. It's embracing, it's showing this beautiful Central Park landscape that's out there. It's enabling people to make this connection. I think there's going to be a lot of cross-fertilization, and I think that's very, very important. And I think it was very smart of the park to embrace it and to use it as an opportunity to make changes that are necessary and are going to enhance it. So I know I have more to say, but I'm not going to take any more time. I, this is great, and, you know, I support it fully.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Chapin.
Well, I appreciate what Commissioner Chu and others were saying about approaching from the park side because I often walk by that side of the museum and say, gee, it's really nice, it would be really nice to be closer to the back of the museum. But from the beginning, this area was never, was never really about anything but a visual connection, a visual buffer for the museum, which tries to integrate with the landscape. And it was never designed as a space for park users. So, you know, I think what's being done with the landscape now, commenting first on the impact on the scenic landscape, I think that's fine. The new wings will not, wing will not be larger in footprint than the existing wing. There are minor increases in asphalt and path relocation and regrading, which will facilitate barrier-free access. And while we're losing 13 mature trees, we're going to have 40 to 50 new trees. So I think that part of the plan, there is no real question about. On the relationship of the museum to the park and the new wing to the Roche-Dinkaloo master plan, I think it was first, it was actually really interesting to look at the plan, which shows all the individual buildings the museum is composed of. We forget that it's a compound, because of the great central building, we always forget that it's a bunch of little buildings. And I think it's extremely clear that the existing wing is inadequately designed for current use. And there is an ongoing need and will be over time for flexibility in the plan. I think that the current park wings, that were all designed as modern additions, really. And right now, we're looking at a need for better circulation and accessibility, need for higher ceilings and exhibit space, and improved load-bearing capacity, all of which needs modern design. I think that the modern building that's proposed is in itself a fine architectural statement. And the question becomes, does this design fit with the overall intent of the Roche-Dinkaloo plan? And does it integrate with the rear facade and the park? And I think it does integrate well. I think it's got setbacks and terraces, materials and details, solid-to-void relationships. And the park side will be well-integrated through planting and topography and the new trees. And the relationship to the adjacent building, I think, also helps to bring it into the envelope of the plan. I think the, you know, most central critique has really been that it is inadequately symmetrical. And I guess I want to ask, well, do we really need to match the other wing in some fashion? And what if the other wing needs to be redesigned? Mightn't we really like to go in this direction rather than that direction? So I think, you know, looking at the design, as a design, I think, to me, it makes sense. And it's, yeah, it's a little bold, but that's what New York is about. So anyway.
Well said, for this important, not only international, but important New York City institution. So I think we have a consensus to support this project, and we'll make a motion to approve. And I think to break it up, I'll have you make the motion to approve the building. Diana, would you mind making the motion to approve the changes to the scenic landmark?
Sure.
And I'll note that we are advisory on the changes to the scenic landmark, so we can also introduce some recommendations about creating more of an open connection to the building. But for now, we'll do a positive report.
Sure.
Yeah.
In the matter of an advisory report, Borough of Manhattan, LPC 2508909, Central Park, Central Park Scenic Landmark. An English Romantic-style public park designed by Frederick Law Olmsted and Calvary Fox and built in 1857, 1858. Application is to modify paths, relocate a loading accessway, and regrade landscape. I note that the work is being proposed in relation to a proposal to replace the existing Lila Atchison Wallace Wing, Wing T, at the Metropolitan Museum of Art with a new addition on the same footprint as the existing wing. I recommend issuing a positive report, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any historic architectural or landscape features, significantly increase paving, or disrupt any prominent vistas, that the existing landscaping and topography were created in conjunction with the construction of the Lila Atchison Wallace Wing in 1987, and the pathways are not original to the park, that the proposed addition has the same footprint as the existing wing, thus maintaining the proportional relationship between the museum sighting and the park, that since the time of the 1872 Olmsted and Fox master plan, this location included a large museum building squeezed between Fifth Avenue, a park road, and the reservoirs, and that the paths surrounding the museum have been modified at various times throughout its history to accommodate changes to the building's footprint and access points, and the proposed alterations to the paths will be in keeping with a pattern of change over time, that the proposed topographical features and plantings ensure that the building as a whole and the new addition will continue to be seen only episodically in the context of natural features and the taller buildings on Fifth Avenue, that the modifications to the grading and pathway system and limited expansion of paving in select areas will improve barrier-free access and enhance the visitor's experience by increasing public access without eliminating or damaging any significant historic architectural or landscape features, that 13 mature trees will be removed and 44 will be planted, some species that will grow very tall, thereby reducing the visibility of the addition over time as the trees and other plantings grow and further integrating the addition into the landscape, and that the proposed work will not detract from the significant historic and naturalistic character of the Central Park scenic landmark.
All right. Commissioner Luttrell, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, what do you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Luttrell. Commissioner Master. With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Changes to the scenic landmark are approved, and we're going to issue an advisory report. And as you continue to work with the Public Design Commission and think about the front, we would welcome any additional changes to increase the sort of engagement with the park users and the building. All right, Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make the other motion?
With regards to LPC 25-08226, 1000 Fifth Avenue Metropolitan Museum of Art Individual and Interior Landmark, a Beaux-Arts and Roman-style museum building designed by Fox and Moll, R.M. Hunt, and McKinmeade and White, and built in 1864 and 1965, with later additions built between 1975 and 1990 and designed by Roche and Dinkaloo. Application is to demolish the Lila Atchison Wallace Wing, Wing T, addition, and construct a new addition. I note that the Wing T, currently the Lila Atchison Wallace Wing, was designed by Roche and Dinkaloo and constructed pursuant to the 1973 Commission Advisory Approval Report of a master plan for future construction and built circa 1987. I also note the Metropolitan Museum of Art was incorporated in 1870 to encourage and develop the study of fine art and furnish popular instruction. The site on Fifth Avenue within Central Park was established in 1872, and it was constructed between 1874 and 1991, with wings designed by multiple architects and featuring a variety of styles reflective of these time periods, including the original wing, Wing A, a Victorian Gothic-style building designed by Vaugh and Moll and built in 1874 to 80, with addition Wing B and C built in 1888 and 1994, the Roman-style Fifth Avenue entrance Wing D, designed by Richard Morris Hunt in 1902, and the Beaux-Arts-style flanking wings on Fifth Avenue, Wings E, H, I, and K, designed McKinmeade and White and completed between 1911, 1913, and 1916 and 1926, and the eight wings, Wing M, O, P, R, S, T, U, and A, M, designed by Roche and Dinkaloo as part of their 1973 master plan and constructed between 1975 and 1991. Among others that are no longer visible from public thoroughfares are Central Park. I further note that the three master plans that were not executed were developed for the expansion of the museum, designed by Fox and Moll, Richard Morris Hunt, and McKinmeade and White, and feature interconnected buildings following a rectilinear plan with corner pavilions and courtyards. However, by the mid-20th century, buildings began to be constructed within the proposed interior courtyards, and a fourth master plan designed by Roche and Dinkaloo in 1971, featuring a rectilinear plan with corner pavilions and central pavilion on the park side, was largely executed. I recommend approval, finding that the area of demolition is at the park side of the museum set well back from the prominent Fifth Avenue facade, that the late 20th-century wing to be demolished was constructed in 1987, 20 years after the museum was designated as an individual landmark without a clear program to inform its design. And although the current wing is consistent with the other park-side pavilions, its demolition will not eliminate any significant architectural features, that certain aspects of the Roche and Dinkaloo master plan, although largely completed, ultimately failed to address the museum's programmatic or collection needs and were unrealized or modified over time. Therefore, the demolition and construction of a new wing will be in keeping with the museum's original goals for the master plan. That the museum's complex is a result of several building expansion campaigns, varying in age, type, style, and scale, that addressed the evolving needs and size of the collection and visitation trends, often employing a contemporary design aesthetic, and that the proposed addition will be in keeping with the layered architectural character and evolution of the museum complex without diminishing the unifying features of the complex. That the new wing will address programmatic needs of the contemporary art collection for which the existing wing was not originally designed, that the proposed wing will be set within the footprint of the existing wing, thereby maintaining the symmetrical footprint of the current and past master plans, that the construction of the new addition will reinforce and harmonize with certain primary objectives of the Roche and Dinkaloo master plan for the complex, including maintaining a rhythm of alternated solids and supporting the cross-axial relationship of the complex and improving the circulation through the complex. That the park-facing side west facade of the museum is rarely seen in its entirety, unlike the Fifth Avenue facade, due to the topographical constraints and planting. Therefore, the changes in symmetry in terms of the massing and design will not detract from unity of the west facade as a whole. of the massing and design will not detract from unity of the west facade as a whole, that the north and central parts of the west facade will continue to reflect the Roche and Dinkloo plan and therefore preserve this phase in the museum's evolution, that the tallest portion of the proposed wing will be shorter than the wing housing the Great Hall, Wing D, helping to main the primacy of the Fifth Avenue facade, that the massing of the proposed wing will maintain a stepping back of the facade characteristic of the existing Roche and Dinkloo park-facing facades, which will integrate the building with the park and will align the setback in the adjacent facade of Wing U, that the facade of the new addition will recall and reflect historic architectural forms throughout the built history, a literal and abstract reference to the museum's existing buildings and art collection and its setting within the city and park, that the proposed Indiana limestone cladding will match the stone cladding material found throughout the Fifth Avenue and park-facing facades of the complex, maintaining a subtle connection between the end pavilions of the park-facing west facade and the split-face texture and woven screen design, where recall the level of articulation, variety of details found at other historic building wings in the complex, that the exposed and screen glazing will provide visual connection of the park to the park and moderation between the areas of the museum, featuring large expanses of glazing with those featuring large expanses of masonry, will continue to serve as a transition between the park and more classical wings of Fifth Avenue, that the proposed wing will only be visible from Fifth Avenue at oblique angles through large areas of foliage and in select views from the surrounding parkland, often in the context of mature plantings, terracing, and natural topography, and will be well-scaled to the surrounding complex in these views, that the removal and modification of proportions of the existing wing to remain will be limited to minimal amount necessary to connect the new addition to the existing wing and will match the materiality, finish, and fenestration of the existing wing, and the work will enhance the special architectural, historic, cultural, naturalistic significance of the Metropolitan Museum of Art Individual Landmark and the Central Park Scenic Landmark.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Aye.
Commissioner Master. With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Right, that's approved. Thank you very much. Thank you, and good luck, and we look forward to seeing how it unfolds and develops. And I want to thank everyone for participating today. That concludes our public hearing, and we will be meeting next week, April 29th, to review all of the items that we read into the record today. And thank you all.